Of Thursday, February 13th, 2020. To order. Can we do a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the case of a fire, there are two ways to exit the chamber. To my left, exit through the council chamber doors, turn left, and walk down one flight of stairs and out of the building. Or exit the door to the rear of the council chambers. In either case, once out of the building, walk a safe distance away from the building. Roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray, absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott, absent. Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alimo.
Here.
John Petronella, absent. Dane Thurogood, absent. Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, I'd like to see Vinnie Grillo as a full member for tonight's meeting to take the place of Linda DeGray, who is absent. Can I get an approval of the minutes of January 16th, 2020, the special meeting?
I move we approve the minutes of the special meeting.
Second. Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Abstention.
No, Frank abstained. And on approval of the minutes, January 23rd, regular meeting.
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23rd.
Questions or concerns? All in favor? Unanimous? And zoning enforcement officers report. This is for the new members.
Good evening, Commissioners. The last meeting, I believe, that you received a spreadsheet listing a number of violations and a report on some of the more important violations that we're presently working on. I'll give you some updates. A situation with 350 North Maple Street that's been going on for some time. That's actually being handled by the town attorney's office. There's an injunction in place, and the gentleman's attempting to comply still with the court order regarding that matter. That was dealing with a junkyard. 9 St. Thomas Street, that actually went to a citation, a citation hearing. The fines amounted to $1,200, and that was in regards to two buildings, accessory buildings, and a fence that were put on town property, stripped of town property, and onto the neighbor's property to the rear. The fence has been removed. The two buildings have been removed, and the slabs that the buildings that were on have been removed also. Presently, the building department's actually looking into permits for another building that was put up without permits. You'll see that a number of car dealers in town, including Lea Hyundai, Lea VW, Infield Street Auto Sales, Ardioli Dodge, Russo Auto Exchange, they were all issued notices of violations regarding site plan violations where their parking vehicles on landscaped areas on their property, as opposed to what was approved. Most have complied. The only one that's still in violation is Auto Exchange, and that deals with signage issue. 117 North Street, myself, Laurie, and the town attorney's office went to New Britain Court, I believe it was the 13th of January, and there was a court hearing, and the judge allotted 45 days for the applicant, or the property owner, to apply, to come into compliance. As such, no applications have been submitted regarding the violation out there. That's the, it's foreign property, it was purchased, there's a residential home on it, but there's also a sand and gravel company that's been operating on it. That's the basis of the violation. And then there's a situation involving 79 Infield Street, and that's a recycling business that went into the rear of that building. If you're not familiar with it, that's, used to be Electrical Wholesalers. And recycling, of course, is not allowed in a business zone. It's only allowed in industrial zones. The property of Butts Residential Properties up there, R33. It's gone through the different steps of the violation process. Citation was issued. The party also appealed to the ZBA but never showed for the meeting. As such, I issued the citation the next day, and he's appealing the fines, but the property, in researching the property further, it's found that the bank is foreclosed on the property. So, we're not really sure at one point we're going to be able to correct the issue. I was told today by the attorney that represented the bank that Friday, the 21st, the bank will actually take possession of it, and they'll give me a contact number so we can see if we can rectify the violation. That's about it. So, if you have any other questions or...
Anybody?
Sounds like an interesting week.
The issue of the signage, I guess that came up at the last meeting, was taken care of too. So, I know, they're popping up quite frequently now, so we're trying to get a rain on them.
Yeah, yeah. And then, one question. There was some debates going back and forth about the people who stand on the side of the road holding the signs, like the Liberty Tax Guy. He is within the regula, he can't be stopped, can he?
No.
No, he can't.
No, that's, that's an issue that we went through before. The only thing, I mean, obviously, you can't go into the roadway, you'd be impeding traffic, police would take action on that. There's a problem with enforcing that type of signage and advertising.
He doesn't have a sign. I went by there the other day, he's not holding a sign. You can get him because the sign, when he used to do it, is moving. We do not allow moving signage. You can go to the owner of the bank, who owns the property, the manager of the bank, the bank owns the property, and discuss it with him. And I'm sure you can be persuasive about if he, if he holds up the sign again. He waves, that's allowed. Holding a sign is not allowed.
Right, but he's not holding a sign.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Somebody said, "holding a sign."
No, no.
Oh, he can wave.
He can also stand there holding a sign, but the minute he starts spinning it around and stuff like that...
And walking with it.
That's why you see the store closings, they're just standing still, holding these signs, because you can't stop them.
Right.
You know, like coming down Route 5 tonight, I mean, and a lot of the houses in the historic district, they have, like, prom sales going on and stuff like that. Now, those are on private property, but they're in the state right of way. You know, that's allowed.
Yep.
So, there's ways to manipulate it that there's nothing you can do.
But at one time, when they first started, when Liberty first started, he was flipping and waving, and there were accidents, and that's not allowed.
Right, and I think maybe that's what somebody was interpreting when zoning said something about it, but for him to actually stand there in costume with no sign...
He can stand and wave, and that's what he does.
Right.
And dance.
And dance, yep. All right, everybody good? Rick, thank you for coming in tonight.
No problem.
I mean, we're all set if you wanted to scoot out.
Hang around for a little bit.
I mean, you've been pretty busy lately, and we understand, so I just wanted to get the new members up to speed on what you were working on, so I appreciate it. Okay. Next, public participation. Does anyone, would anyone like, at this point in the meeting, to come up and speak comments and concerns relating to planning and zoning in Enfield? That is not on the agenda. You're welcome to come up and speak now. Anyone? No one? Okay, thank you. Bond releases, PH 2850.
I just had a question. Site remediation thing is fine, but how can you release a landscape bond in the wintertime when you don't know what's growing?
That's why...
It's been two years since it was put in.
And somebody's been out there last summer and looked at it?
Yep.
Thank you.
I had the same concerns, but I looked at the staff's comments, and I believe Vinnie brought it up too, yep. Anybody else? Questions, concerns about, questions, concerns about the bond release?
Yeah, I was just interested in the timing, how it all works, so I could just be brought to speed. I see this bond was given to the town, I'm sorry.
I'm just interested in the process, so that could be brought to speed. I see the bond was issued in 2017, and we're releasing it today. It's on a table to be released. So, when was the property inspected for the release of procedure? I guess I'm just trying to find out why it's taken, so when was it completed? So, they had to file plans, they had to file ASBILs. So, when was the ASBILs received?
This past summer. The issue comes into play is, we don't, on our own, release a bond. We have to wait, excuse me, until there's a request by the applicant. So, the applicant will put in a letter requesting a release of the bond, and there's a form that's required to be filled out. At that point, we start the process of releasing the bonds, and we come to you with the report and the resolution.
So, it's triggered by the applicant, so like 517, they, they requested or filed the, filed the requested information?
Correct.
So, this is, it's almost a year before they get their money done, by the time they file?
After they file.
No, after they file.
They file, it's almost a year. We're in, almost, we're in February.
Ten months.
Ten months. So, I guess I'm wanting to know, is that the procedure? We, after the filing, that the money still is not released, or the bond's not released for 10 months?
No, we usually go, go about it. I wasn't in, I wasn't here when that came in originally, so they contacted me regarding that a couple weeks or a month ago, and I started the process of doing the bond release forms.
Okay, so these could be expedited quicker if the people...
Normally, they are. It's just that that one happened to come in in an email form, and then we were waiting on an actual letter, because we require a letter from the property owner, or the project manager, whoever submits the bond for the project. And we were waiting on that for a couple months before we actually got that.
Okay.
So...
Yep, okay. Just want to be sure that, you know, we're moving along quickly, and we're not sitting on the bonds too long, and that...
Normally, that's not the case.
Our customers are being served quickly.
Normally, that's not the case.
Okay, no, good, thank you.
So, I, so I take it, once we got the email, we went and did the inspection?
The inspection was done when we got the original ASBIL. It's always done with the ASBIL, because they're usually looking for the CL.
Okay.
All right, so after that, if it deals with a landscape bond, obviously, we have to wait through the spring and summer to release that one.
Yep.
But, like I said, in the springtime, I wasn't around for a period of time.
Yep.
And then, so I missed that, but then they contacted me, and we started the ball-rolling on the release.
Good. Any other questions, concerns? Can I get a motion to...
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to release bonds for public hearing 2850 in the amount of $17,750 for the site restoration bond, and $7,050 for the landscape bond.
Second.
Questions? Good? All in favor? We have no new, or no continued public hearings, so we will move to new public hearings. Public hearing 2964, Zone Text Amendment application.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, February 13th, 2020, at 7:00 PM in a Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Infield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. Public hearing 2964, Zone Text Amendment application to Table 4.20, use table for residential districts to allow for multifamily residential use within the historic district, HR 33 Zone, requiring adherence to Section 4.30.2, conversion of buildings for residential purposes. Town owner, Our Town Investment LLC applicant, historic residential R33 Zone, HR 33 Zone, and the information is available at the Town Clerk's Office. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alimo.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Laurie?
Is the... Is that what came here?
Good evening.
Name and address for the record, please.
Chris Marzlik, Our Town Investments LLC, 15 South Road, Enfield, Connecticut.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm looking to convert 1283 Infield Street from a two-family, which it currently is, to a three-family by subdividing the first floor. I currently have a two-family to the right of me. We currently are a two-family, and there's a couple other in the area, so we're looking to get the text amendment, so we could do that and go through zoning. I know there were some requirements or some conditions they asked for, and we were able to meet all that, as far as, I think the septic was a question, and we're not on septic, we are connected to the public sewer system. And I don't know if that needs to be validated or not, but we can do that if that's one of the requirements.
Commissioner Higley.
If, are you in the HR 33 district?
Yes, we are.
Is, are multiple families allowed?
He said there's two families right next door to it.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so why would we change the zoning regs?
Laurie?
If there are two-family homes on either side or wherever close by, why would we change the zoning regulations? Why can't he just have a special use permit and be done with it?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know why we change a lot of things, but...
But we could approve it without changing the zoning regs, correct?
No.
I don't think so, not if it says that you can't do it.
This is an HR 33 zone. Duplexes are not allowed in HR 33. Well, they're allowed with special permit in other zones, but not in HR 33.
But the thing is, that affects the whole district. I have no problem with two-family, but multifamily, there's no definition of multifamily, which is what you're changing into in our regulations. I looked. So, that would need to be interpreted, and I went to the Connecticut State statute, and I couldn't find it. I went to the Webster Collegian 10th Edition, 9th Edition. By the way, they're up to the 12th edition, but the 9th Edition, and it was just a generic noun, you know, like, this is when more than one person lives in there. So, I, I think, and I, I'm digressing, but my point is, if we change it tonight, it changes for the whole district without any guide, specific guidelines, and that's my concern.
I think that was the point of adding footnote 14 to reference the conversion of buildings for residential purposes. I think that was the point of adding section, or footnote 14 referencing adherence to 4.30.2, conversion of buildings.
I did read that, and it just didn't give me the comfort that I personally required. We have a lot of historic buildings down there, and the way I interpret it, not you, but the way I interpret it for future people coming in, they could just tear down the building and build a, oh, no, that's, that's, it's multifamily, it's not. There's, there's no guidelines in there on how to protect what we have. Again, I have no problem with the two-family.
I, I think to that, I may answer part of that. Being in historic zone, we're not allowed to change the exterior of the buildings in any way, shape, or form, so no one could tear it down or alter the exterior, but they could alter the interior, is what we're looking to do, but I don't know if that was what you...
But, yeah, but I have learned that nothing is forever. Everything changes. Somebody could go to the state, which is, which oversees the historic district, and say, "Well, you know, I think it's a great idea, but I think that we need to be looking at maybe the 1940s or the 1950s," and then you could just tear it down and put up a glass, you know. Again, I'm overreacting, but I'm just giving staff my concerns. Again, nothing to do with, I have no problem with you converting. It used to be that people in most districts could convert to, from a one to, to a three, and I don't know why they don't do it in historic districts.
But that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Because one thing it does say in footnote 14, I believe, is that you can only add one additional unit per building that's there right now. So, you couldn't take a, a one-family and convert it to a three-family, you can only take a one-family and convert it into two-family.
Right.
So, in that sense, you're sort of limiting how the conversions could be made, and how many multifamily, or how many multi...
But it doesn't say that you can't tear the structure down to build a new one. I mean, you could leave the front up and do the whole side and back. I'm just, again, I'm not comfortable, and I understand the intent, it just isn't spelled out for me personally.
Well, I know the historic district in Enfield is pretty tough, and, you know, they, they stick to their guns as far as the front of the house goes. Any additions they make you build, retro?
It's actually the sides, it's actually all the way to the back. I've done, I've actually converted a historic house once already. It is very tough.
Right, so anything he alters on this house to make the unit, he has to conform with the historic district, even if it burnt to the ground and he rebuilt it, he still has to build it period correct to go forward.
That's the reason I have, I have basically a $600,000 insurance policy on it, because it has to be built to the historic.
Are there any structures in the historic district that are more than 250 feet back? Because that's the guideline.
Well, there's a few houses in the historic district that don't meet the guidelines before the historic district was born.
There are some.
Pardon me?
There are some that are located beyond, but it's, it's spelled out in the historic ordinance as to what those properties are.
I've read it. Okay.
So, just if you don't mind, you know, typically, multifamily is considered, it really depends on definitions, but multifamily is usually like four or above dwelling units. We don't allow either the duplexes or the multifamily in HR 33.
But you will.
So, that's, that's what I'm just saying, so, you know, we don't allow two, three, or four, and then we don't, don't allow multifamily above that either, so...
I, I'm confused. I, I hear what you're saying, I know what the zoning regulations say, I, I just know that there are so many two-families in the historic district, and apartments in the historic district, and I'm just wondering, if we don't allow them, how they came up out? And they were not there before, you know, because I looked some of them up. Anyway, it doesn't matter.
Because the regulation was changed.
I think she's saying that she doesn't think that they were there before the regulation was changed to the historic, right?
Correct, that's what I'm saying, so...
So, I, I mean, I, I can't speak to that, but I mean...
I can speak to mine, and say mine's, the two-family I live in's been there since, probably in the 50s, if not, not the 30s or 40s.
And, and you're doing it the correct way, and I, I give you credit for that, because a lot of people just build it and then say, "Oh," you know, it's been there forever.
I do too much business in this town.
No, no, no. Again, I have no issues with what you're trying to do.
I understand.
So, I think Commissioner Higley's biggest problem with this is changing the entire district.
Right.
Is there a way to do site-specific through like a special permit, which I saw you shaking your head, "No," where we could do something, you know? I, I know the town does a lot of things, you know, to make things work, and to make her feel comfortable, because I understand her concerns, you know?
The most I can think of is a use variance, which are difficult, because you have to prove hardship, and uses, I mean, there, it's sort of difficult to prove use hardships before zoning board of appeals, but I'm not the zoning board of appeals, so we can't really say what they would or wouldn't do.
Do we have a minimum square footage that's allowed? In other words, I know you have a large house, but do we have like a minimum 600 feet?
It's 600.
That's what I thought.
Per unit.
So, is that going to change, or is that going to stay the same?
Stays the same.
For multifamily? So, if you don't have 600, can you go and get a variance?
Well, that'd be up to the ZBA.
Well, it should, no, you can actually spell out in, in the regulations that it cannot be varied by the zoning board of appeals.
It is in the building code, I know that, the 600 square feet.
Well, I know it's in here, I'm just saying that I wondered if it would change with multifamily.
Well, looking at...
If you wanted to do four, would you have enough space?
Um, yeah, in theory, I probably could. In theory, I could.
But he can't, because it's only one more unit.
But that can come back and be changed.
But he's not here to...
No, 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 I, again, I have no problem with you, and, and thank you for explaining.
Right, that's, I mean, the one unit is what I'm hanging my hat on. I understand your concerns.
It says multifamily. Multifamily can be...
Right, but it's got to be a three made to a four, it can't be a two made to a four.
But, but this is what we're working with the new regulations to keep from happening. In other words, it says multifamily in one spot, and it says one more in another spot.
But they're all multifamilies. His two-family's a multifamily now.
Right, duplex.
Right, so whether it's two, three, or four, it's a multifamily.
Right, but I'd rather see duplex.
A duplex...
Well, Rich said you could only do one more.
Right, right, right. If it's three units or four units, it's not a duplex anymore.
Do we have any three?
I don't know.
You know, the only thing that, the only way I think that we can address your concerns, Ms. Higley, is the fact that, you know, if there was a caveat that, you know, and again, I could see where, you know, today, we change it from a one-to-a-two-family house, and then in five years, we change it from a two-family to a three-family house, so that, you know, if we added, you know, in footnote number 14, or subsection, you know, 4.30.2, we can add something that says that, you know, once a conversion was made under, you know, these regulations, it cannot be utilized again as part of another conversion, you know, utilizing these same regulations. So, so, so that would sort of definitively say, you can't take a two, one family, change it to a two, come back five years later and change it to a three, come back five years later and change it to a four, so that, you know, once it's done once, you can only have one chance to do that.
I agree.
And possibly, if we did something along those lines, to add it to footnote number 14, you know, it would, you know, prevent that, that recurrence of...
From over and over every few years.
Yeah, adding additional units all the time, so, and that would satisfy you.
That would satisfy me, because for the most part, everybody are responsible homeowners, and they buy in the historic, so they can keep it historic.
I agree with you.
Every once in a while, you get one, there's one all the time, so I think the one time would cover everybody, and I would be fine with that.
Mr. Chairman, point of order, please, there's too many discussions going on. Thank you. You're welcome. Good? Through the chair to the staff? Yeah.
So, staff, this proposal is to change the zoning from Route 190 to King Street, correct?
Uh, yes.
That far, the distance?
Yep.
Right? So, um...
Well, it's not changing the zone, it's changing a permitted use.
A permitted use, yeah.
Okay.
And, in the background, we have no, no issues from, from the historical commission. They're fine with this.
Yep.
It's in the notes.
Right, so, and I think what Chairman Nelson was saying, the historical commission is on top of things, and they are very strict. So, for me, I don't see a problem with this, if the service commission's on board, and it's a total, totally clean application, and all the staff comments were positive. Mr. Chair, I don't have a problem with this.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission before I open it up to the public? Commissioner Grillo?
As far as the parking, did you take, was that all considered in this?
Yeah, there's...
Off-street parking, there's going to be plenty of parking there?
We'll have six, we'll actually have the ability to have seven plus, and if I want to, if I can increase the driveway, I could actually probably go to about 12 spaces if I really wanted to, but I do have seven the way it sits right now.
Thank you.
And that's including the garage, but that's seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Sure.
I was thinking, maybe what we could do is, in the table, under duplex residences, we could put in, under HR 33...
but I do have seven the way it sits right now.
Thank you.
And that's including the garage, but that's seven.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, if I might?
Sure.
I was thinking maybe what we could do is in the table, under duplex residences, we could put in, under HR 33 special permit, with the caveat that it can only go up to four units. And that way, it meets three-point, I am 4.30.2, as opposed to like a full multi-family development. Because I know this commission has not been in favor of a lot of multi, large multi-family complexes. So that way, you're just, you're still limiting it to two to four units per property, and it's still following the 4.30.2, but it doesn't push it over to that big multi-family residential type of development. No?
I like the way Rich said it, but that's just me. Because-
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
You can keep coming back, and then you cut up the whole house. And, and I just like the way he said it.
They're not residential. They're not residential.
They are residential, but this says anything.
You're fine with what Lori just said, or the way you said it?
I apologize. That would be, I said duplexes, and it should be conversion of buildings for residential use. That's where the use would go into, not the duplex. In, in the table, that's all.
Okay. I guess I do have one comment. In terms of, you know, under section 4.30.2, you know, subsection number G, it has conversion of non-residential buildings such as industrial or mill buildings to multi-family may take place under this section, and requirements of sections B and C above shall be waived for such conversions. Because that, that allows for a significant number of units in terms of, you know, maybe, and again, maybe we say, you know, section, you know, 4.30.2, add a section H and say, except in, you know, or in say, especially in the HR 33 district, you know, you cannot utilize this particular, you know, I guess caveat more than once on any particular lot with these regulations, and, you know, subsection G does not apply in an H 33 zone. So this way, you get rid of the multi-families, and you only allow it to be used once by adding a subsection H that sort of says that kind of language.
And that would allow-
So could-
Say Chris purchased the nursing home and wanted to convert that larger property into an apartment complex. He could do that.
Is that in the HR 33?
Because that would be a commercial building.
Right, but if it was in the HR 33, we just excluded it from being, being able to do that.
So he couldn't do that.
Correct. Because, again, by adding that subsection H, that says you can, you can not use this more than once, and you could not use subsection G as part of this regulation in HR 33.
Okay. So we could, we could say that subsection G does not apply to, within this caveat.
Anybody else before I open it up to the public? Any questions, Chris, before? Okay. If you can have a seat back there. We're going to let the public come up and speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anybody in the public like to come up and speak in regards to public hearing 2964 for the first time? Anybody like to come up for the second time? The third time? I'm good, ready to close the public hearing. If you guys are good, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
No, we agreed to vote on it. All in favor? Unanimous? Public hearing's closed. Okay. It's up to you guys. You want to move forward with it?
Mr. Chair, I'm moved for the approval of public, the resolution to approve public hearing number 2964 dated February 13, 2020, as prepared by the Planning Department. I guess there are no conditions listed, but we are going to be modifying the footnote number 14 to include another subsection number H, which would indicate that the use of, you know, the added unit per building can only be utilized once per building under these regulations, and that subsection G does not apply in an HR 33 zone.
For clarification, that would be a change to 4.30.2, not necessarily footnote 14, but footnote 14 would still be referenced.
Right, right.
Okay.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, public hearing 2965, 51 Palumbo Drive.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, February 13, 2020, at 7:00 PM in Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing 2965, 51 Palumbo Drive, special use and site plan application to allow for a freestanding tenant identification pylon sign under section 10.30.9, DEFCON Commons LLC owner Darren Sean applicant, map 56, lot 7, business loco BL zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alimo.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Darren Senna from Hartford Sign &amp; Design. I'm here with the landlord representative.
JR Cody from DEFCON Commons LLC.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Good. Give us a little update of what you're here for.
We have a conforming multi-tenant pylon sign that meets your requirements as far as setback, height requirement, trying to accommodate for all the tenants in the plaza. Actually surprised this wasn't done originally. That's what we're looking to do.
Here to try to give the tenants within the center more exposure and-
Absolutely.
-a system in this new world we're living in-
Amazon.
-of Amazon world and trying to help our tenants out.
Absolutely. Good. Lori, you have anything you want to add? Pretty straightforward?
It is pretty straightforward. We presented a staff report in your packets that had comments from the engineering department and the police department. They did go out and stake out where the sign along Palumbo Drive would be located and provided measurements, which was a pretty fast turnaround, so thank you.
Thank you for your help.
And we did circulate at your desk the updated comments when we did send those out to engineering and police. Both got back to us today and said they have no concerns with the proposed change, with concern to site visibility of sightlines and stuff like that, so. The only other item that I have in the staff report that we noted was, we weren't sure in writing the staff report, how much landscaping would be taken out and what was approved. It's my understanding in conversation on the phone that landscaping will be put back in if it is taken out. So we did add a site-specific condition of approval regarding landscaping and bonding, if you guys wanted to do that or not. So that's the only other open item that I had.
Made that a condition.
I put that in there just in case you guys wanted to. If you don't want to, you guys, you can take it off the list.
Yeah, our, our plan is to put the footing into where the bush area is, and then we will replace it with low-lying seasonal flowers.
Okay.
Keep it simple and keep it low and not obstruct, low maintenance, and also have it low so that there's no obstruction to sightlines or anything like that.
Okay. Commissioner Higley.
I don't think we need a bond, as long as it's some kind of shrubs or plants and no cars, we're good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Grillo?
I agree. I don't think the bond is necessary, but definitely the shrubbery has to go back in there, I would think.
Commissioner Suzak?
Because I have one question. In terms of you retrofitting one sign, are you actually, and I believe you're, you're adding sleeves on top, are you going to dismantle the existing sign, leave the posts that are there-
Underneath.
-and then slide something over it, and then somehow secure it to whatever there?
The other pylons.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we're just adding the tenants.
A few tenant slot names, not, not-
Six.
Six.
Right. I, I guess you're, you're going to be, you know, another three feet higher, you know, because these-
No, we're going underneath the existing pylon sign.
You know, because I guess, and maybe that's my confusion in terms of, right now, I see that, you know, the existing sign is 170 feet, which is, or 170 inches-
Correct.
-which is less than 15 feet, because 15 feet is 180.
Right.
And it says your new sign is 18 feet, so based-
Raising up the existing sign, keeping the post in place, not doing anything to the post, raising it up and putting the new sign underneath.
So-
The additional panels.
So, are you, how are you adding, so you're going to add something to the base, you know, some extending the, the sign feet lower? But, but they're only a certain height right now. They're, they're less than 15 feet high now.
Yep.
And I'm not sure how you're going to get them up to 18 feet.
We're only, no, we're only adding four feet of signage, so we're raising that up about two feet, and then putting the other sign underneath. Right now, it's pretty high. There's a lot of space underneath the existing sign. If you look at the original signpost.
Yeah, well, again, if you look at that picture, okay, look at the upper left-hand corner.
Correct.
It says the sign is 170 inches. So 170 inches is less than 15 feet, because 15 feet is 180. But then when I look at, you know, the left-hand side, side of the bigger sign, it says it's 18 feet tall. So 18 feet is more than 15 feet, so somehow you got to grow the feet by three feet or more, and you can't just stretch it because whatever it's made out of doesn't stretch.
You're cutting it, putting extenders in.
We're taking this sign, we're raising it up-
Yep.
-and putting the other sign underneath it.
Correct, but you have to, you have to add three feet of-
Feet.
Feet of-
And I'm not, I'm not sure how you're going to get that, add that extra three feet.
Yeah, we're extend, I'm sorry, yes, yes. We are extending the post.
You're correct.
The post, these are, they're post covers, so that what you're seeing is the post covers. Inside there, there's steel, so we're telescoping the steel up and then putting the new signs underneath it.
A new sheet.
Okay, so basically, you're going to do some magic and-
Yes.
-hocus pocus, and you're going to make it work. All right, I just wanted to make sure I understood what you were going to do, but-
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Alimo?
Did I understand that you weren't changing the current footing? You're not going into the ground at all?
No.
And that footing is going to be able to withhold the additional sign?
Absolutely.
And in your design going forward, let's say you had a space that you were going to divide into two spaces.
Yep.
And you needed an extra sign. Are you developing this in a way where you won't have to come back here?
Yes.
And you could add another tenant space, tenant sign to it?
Yep, both systems are set up that way.
Okay.
So the signs don't have to be attached, anything has to be attached to it.
So you can-
Absolutely.
Add to it and-
Those dividers are interchangeable. It's a extruded system.
Okay.
So there's parts that can be moved and divided.
But it is possible in that type of a use where you have a single use now that can be divided into two, and you need some more signage.
Yep.
You don't need to come back here.
Absolutely.
It's like a glass panel that would slide into the-
Great, okay.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other commissioners, comments, concerns? Anything else you'd like to add before I open it up to the public?
No, I want to thank you for your consideration.
No problem. Commissioner Grillo?
The only thing I, I have two copies of the sign, and the only thing that's confusing me a little bit is the one that you lifted up and showed me said 18 feet, but I'm looking at this one that says 22 feet.
You're doing two signs.
That's the other, the new sign.
That's the new one.
That's the new sign.
There's one new one.
I thought the original was only 16 feet.
No, there's two signs.
That was, oh, there's-
There's one on Hasid Avenue and there's one on Palumbas.
The one on Palumbas is going to be brand new. That's going to be constructed. It's not there today.
How's it, is the retrofit? He's talking two signs now.
Okay.
Sorry, I apologize for that.
I looked at the two signs, they look the same, and one's 22 feet up in the air.
Trying to make them look the same.
That's kind of, okay.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Gentlemen, have a seat back there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody in the audience that would like to come up and speak for or against public hearing 2965? Anyone in the audience? 2965, for or against? Second time? Going for the third time? Nobody? Nobody would like to come up? Are you guys all set? Good to close the public hearing? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous? Public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the resolution to approve public hearing 2965 as prepared by the Planning Department dated February 13, 2020, with the 21 conditions listed, plus, including one site-specific condition.
Did you want to remove that one? That was the bond?
No, I-
Or?
The bond, I thought we-
We read the wave.
We were going to wave it? Okay, so, so let me reiterate my, my motion is that it will only include 20 conditions, and we're going to remove the one-site specific condition.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions or concerns on the motion? All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda-
Second to that, please?
What's that?
Who said, who made the second? Thank you, Jen.
Next on the agenda, public hearing 2966, 281 Abbey Road.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, February 13, 2020, at 7:00 PM at Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application, public hearing 2966, 281 Abbey Road, special use and site plan application to allow the expansion of a non-conforming structure under section 3.40.1D to accommodate a garage with above storage space and mudroom. Daniel Spazzerini, owner applicant, map 86, lot 270, R44 zone. Ken Nelson.
Here.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alimo.
Here.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Dan Spazzerini of 281 Abbey Road.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
So, I'm trying to build a garage, mudroom addition onto my house, and my house was rezoned after it was built, so it's, now it's, the setbacks are supposed to be 50 feet, but my house is 35 feet off the road. So, I'm trying to just get a special permit to build my garage in line with the house, no closer to the road. That's pretty much it.
Sounds like a Burnham Road again, which we set past precedence with that. The entire Burnham Road, they changed the zone, all the houses are over the front yard setback. So, he's just doing what he has to do, and this is something I think that the regulation should be changed. And if, if you read it a certain way, you could almost interpret it that it would be for new structures instead of existing structures, so our citizens don't have to come forward and spend this money on the plans and surveying and stuff like that, and the time it takes. And I really think the commission should take a look at that, because that would eliminate a lot of grief for the residents of Enfield. And actually, Lori, if you could put that on a future agenda for us to address that. Very much.
Think, jumped right on that.
It's already on the list.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, so what they did actually is change something and make all the existing structures non-conforming.
Well, in his particular case, on his house, yes, I'm not sure about the rest of the street.
No, the other example you were giving me, Burnham.
Burnham Street, they changed the whole zone, which made the whole street...
Non-conforming.
Every single resident who wants to put a garage on their house, in line with their house, has to do the same thing Mr. Spazzerini's doing.
Wow.
And I think it's a waste of money. The houses were built in that zone, they should be grandfathered.
I agree.
So, we understand, we apologize, we're following protocol. Hopefully, we get you out of here tonight. So, any other questions or comments? We're going to open it up to the public, and we'll call you back.
Thank you.
Anybody in the public that would like to come up and speak in regards to public hearing 2966, for or against? Please come forward. Going for the second time? Anyone? 2966, for the third time? Nobody's here to speak? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the resolution to approve public hearing 2966 dated February 13, 2020, as prepared by the planning department with the 24 conditions listed. There is one-site specific condition about the merging, merging of the properties, so I think we would leave that in place, so...
I always thought that when you had a non-conforming lot, and it was, both parcels were in the same name, that they automatically merged to make them more conforming, correct?
That, that is something that is often done by the assessor, not necessarily always.
Oh, no, no.
So, I don't know why one, why this would have or not have been merged?
I'm speaking of planning. I know nothing about assessing, but I was, under the assumption that if Joe Smith owned one lot that was non-conforming, and the lot next to it was owned by Joe Smith, to make them more conforming, they merged automatically.
That's not zoning, right?
There is a section of the regulations that does say that, I guess by, it's not filed on the land records that way, though, so it comes down to what legally...
So, zoning doesn't have the right to do it, but the zoning regulations, I guess, call for it, so therefore, the assessor does that.
So, the building regulations call for it?
Well, is there actually a section in the zoning regulations?
There, there is, there is a section in the beginning that says that for zoning purposes...
Yep.
Lots under the same name are considered merged, but that doesn't necessarily mean that for land record purposes they are.
When I bought two pieces of property, the lawyer told me, don't put them all in the same name, because then they will merge into one, so we have two separate. But you have one, so it would automatically merge.
No, he has two, and he has to merge them.
Right, right.
And that's, I agree with everything you're saying, Commissioner, and if he were sitting here to build a second home...
Well, that's different.
They're going to make him unmerge the lots.
He wouldn't be able to.
But now, they're telling him, they're unmerged, he needs to merge them together. And this is another thing with this town...
Yeah.
That makes contractors pull their hair out, because it's another thing he shouldn't have to do. Either they're merged or they're not.
Yeah.
You know, I bought property in this town that didn't even touch each other. It was in between, there was a house in between, and the town told me they were merged. Well, how can two pieces that don't touch each other?
Well, if you own them.
It's ridiculous. And, and that's something that this commission, I really, we need to put our heads together and stop this, because this is wrong.
Well, the only reason...
Anyways, we have a motion to, so, questions or concerns? Your question was about one of the conditions, okay, so we let that go. You're good with the conditions, Dan?
Yep, I've already gone to the lawyer, I've gotten all the paperwork done, so...
Okay.
I'm good to go.
All right, everybody good? All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I don't believe there was a second on the actual motion.
Didn't you second the motion?
Yes, I did.
You did?
Thank you. Old business, discussion regarding changes to Section 30.30.7, accessory buildings.
All right, so, let me flip to it, sorry. All right. So, I sent a memo in your packet regarding this, because as you know, we've been working on getting the height changes to accessory buildings, changed in residential, commercial, and industrial zones from 12 feet to 15 feet, and to prevent any more areas in the regulations where we find, we change one thing, and then somewhere else in the regulations it's referenced, and we have no idea. I literally went through and scanned the entire document to make sure that didn't happen again, for all of the regulations that we've recently wanted to put forward, so, and it was a good thing I did, because I found that there are discrepancies with the, with the lakefront overlay district, which I detailed in the memo. Basically, within the accessory building regulations, they also specify that accessory buildings need to be a limit, a maximum height of 12 feet. I don't know if you guys wanted to change that to 15 feet as well in your regulations, but I also found that, for some reason, in the lakefront overlay district, they require accessory buildings to be 10 feet away from all property, side and rear property lines, whereas in our regular zones that are bigger properties, it's five feet. So, I just wanted to have a general discussion, or give the commission some food for thought on, on that, along with the fact that there's an entire another section of the regulations governing the same zone with respect to accessory buildings.
So, if I heard you correct...
You know our regulations so well, you picked this up in your head. You didn't have to read anything, you know them by heart, right? That was a...
It's because she scanned them.
In her brain.
Commissioner Higley.
I think the 10 feet was because in the overlay district, the side, the property that touches the road is the backyard. The property that touches the lake is the front yard, so that with the, with the properties being so close together, they did that, I, I assume, for the neighbors, so that they wouldn't have like a garage right up blocking their view when they're coming up their driveway.
Well, that...
Asking me?
No, no, I know. I know.
Well, that ended up being actually written and detailed in Section 4.80, which came after the lakefront overlay district, and references not a lakefront over lake district, but a lake overlay district. And then, the table in the front of the regulations says the lakefront overlay district is the lake overlay district, but there's two different references in the regulations.
All right, we're, we're talking about the height of the building.
Right.
No setbacks?
I thought you saw about how close it was to the...
No, no, she brought that up, but that's not her concern right now. Her concern is the height of the building. What she's talking about is another whole issue, we'll deal with it another time, so...
Right.
Right, I, I also agree. It's going from 12 to 15 feet throughout the entire town.
Okay.
So, wherever it says in the regulation 12, I'm for moving it up to 15. That's what I thought we agreed on. Commissioners, Frank, Rich, you, you all agree? So, I, that was our intent, is the entire town, even at the lake.
Okay. So, we'll amend that, and it, that has been at the Capital Region Council of Governments long enough, that it should be ready to go on the next agenda, if you so wish.
Okay, you don't need us to move on that or anything.
No.
Just to be, just clarification.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, we weren't talking about side yards, rear yards?
No, that's why I stopped it.
Okay, I just heard that come up for a second here.
Right, that's why I stopped it.
All right. Just so I'm clear.
Yep.
I just really wanted to bring that to your attention, about all of the different things that sort of govern the lake overlay district.
I appreciate it, because we're dealing with this non-stop, and what you just did helps eliminate it, and if people had done that years ago, it'd make your job a lot easier. So, thank you, Jen.
Thanks for doing the research on that.
I appreciate that, yep. Okay, so we're good?
What we're voting on right now is only the lakefront overlay district.
No, we're not even voting on it, we already voted.
Oh, okay.
But they just wanted to clarify, because it says in the regulations 12 feet for the lake, and did we mean to include that or not?
Oh, okay.
And you're for it, right? Yep, okay.
So, so, Mr. Chair, the, the lake is not going to be cut out of this new change, it's going to be included in it?
Included in, the entire town, yes. Yep. Okay. All right, new business, site plan review, SPR 1803, 53 Manning Road. Anybody here? Come on up.
If we have boards for an easel, does that help? Oh, we have an easel. Kevin Rothschild Shea, Architecture E.L. Matt Blanchard from my office, he could put the boards right up there. And Chip Labonte.
Hi, I'm Walter Labonte, I'm the owner of the property, KBRC Real Estate.
Are we free?
Go right ahead.
Excellent. Do you want to say anything, or I'll just jump in?
No, just go ahead.
So, since we were here a couple years and some months ago, received our original special permit, where we converted the original warehouse structure to allow a portion of it to be warehousing, self-storage. Recurring questions have come up that have prompted us to, to come back with this modification to that request, to that permit. So, the, the drawing that's up in front of you, you can see in the, the simple blue outline, the, the, the blue that's outlined represents the entire building. The upper rectangle represents a two-story section of the building. In that permit, we were required to produce or include an additional means of egress out the second floor, across the first-floor roof, traverse the building, down a stair, et cetera, et cetera. We included those in the permit drawings, and they are currently in the permit and scope of construction that's underway. The status of the construction relative to the special permit, it started late spring, early summer, and it continues to move through with hopefully completion coming up in the next couple months, with final site work to resume once this kind of muddy, slushy winter sort of ends. So, what's come up in the construction, all the way back to the permit hearing and when we issued the, or submitted on the building permit, Building Inspector Stedward had some questions as to why we were including this means of egress across the roof, because it was somewhat unusual. We explained the, the terms and how it came to be throughout the permitting process. He suggested we follow up on that, in which case, we did with the fire chief, Earl Preventure, which then led to a formal submission to the fire department and the state, looking for a modification to the code. So, we did that both on building during the permit process, and the fire department during the construction or post-building permit process. And the results of that came back, both from building and fire, that no mod request was required, because no code modification was required, no non-compliance was found, and no need to provide or build this extra means of egress across the roof in both the building and the fire codes. So, we have support from the local building, the state building, the local fire, and state fire, that indicate that this additional item is, is not required. It comes at expense to the owner, it, it actually, as we originally were concerned, it runs contrary to some basic safety concerns about exiting people across a roof. So, the, the prime, one of the primary things we're here today is to talk about, or ask for, to remove this egress component across the roof of a building that is not required by any applicable building or fire code.
One, just for clarification...
Sure.
Who required it?
This board.
How did planning and zoning, it's not even in their purview.
Because I remember that application, because I was here, and, and I thought that was part of your application, that you were going to...
No.
Provide that, and, and that it was necessary, because you didn't have enough, you know, stair exit means, so that, because of the fact that you didn't have adequate exit, you know, areas or widths or whatever, you had to provide something additional, or else, you know, the, the distances between the exits were too far, so you had to provide something. So, I thought that's how it evolved, but the thing is, you know, obviously, if it's not required, I don't think that we would need to, you know, enforce that, but I thought that was the whole reason why it evolved. Because I was here, and I remember that.
Yep.
And I'm saying, okay, you know, whatever, you know, if, if it's necessary, it's necessary, but, you know, I don't think that we specifically, you know, initiated the fact that it was necessary. I think that was part, unless my memory's, you know, bad.
Short of breaking into everyone's fragmented memory, there was, under the purview of the board, in terms of life safety, and under the special permit, you know, the, the reach of the board to ensure public safety and the safety of people in the building was, was accounted for, the question came up as to, you know, how that second floor or certain spaces egressed, we pointed out what was there. And then, there was, you know, some concern about egress, and if that was an exit or what have you. So, ultimately, to satisfy the board, we, we included it, you know, so it, at that time, it made sense, because it was clear at the time that unless some accommodation for egress was made for that second floor, even though we weren't really doing work on the second floor, we weren't going to satisfy the needs of the, the board and the permit. So, that's, and obviously, we're going back over two and a half years in terms of our memory banks now, but the, the reality is, we've spent the time backtracking with both building and fire. We have corroborating support and evidence that it's not a code requirement, and we're here formally to ask that it be removed, you know, it's going to land in one of the final pieces of construction in the next couple months, and, you know, really, now's the time for us to, to get forward support.
So, Lori, would the town allow the building official, fire marshals, anybody who goes out, Rick, anybody who goes out to these projects during construction, or even the permit process, would the building department or fire marshal sign off on something that didn't have adequate egress to satisfy them?
Not to my knowledge.
No. No, and that's, that's my concern about the planning and zoning and certain things, you know, and this is one of them, that I think some, they overstepped their bounds, or we did, because I'm part of it now, but I wasn't part of that, so... Do you have anything? No? Okay. Commissioners, anything you want to add?
So, just to understand this correctly, in 2017, you came before this board with this information from the state building official, fire officials, saying it was not required.
Correct.
And it still ended up in your condition of approval, per se?
Yes, sir.
And you're here tonight to ask us to remove something that you didn't even need?
That's our opinion.
Absolutely bizarre.
But, but that's what I'm saying, the commission...
There's some confusion there, for sure.
The commission overstepped, and, you know, this is...
I would like to see us move this as fast as we can tonight to get these gentlemen out of here. It's ridiculous.
And I agree, in terms of, like you said, I was part of that hearing, and, and I don't specifically remember, you know, having a concern to add, you know, an additional fire escape if it wasn't necessary, but, you know, again, my memory isn't that great. Maybe somebody on the commission required, had the feeling that it was unsafe, and, you know, rather than go through a long dissertation, it might have been easier just to pacify this one, and, and I would have to apologize for being involved in something like that, because I was on a commission at that time.
And there were quite a few issues on the table, so we understand. Additionally, we have another point to, to present, but don't want to dissect the conversation until you're ready. The other point is to formally request approval for a small portion of the building to operate about 30, what's, what about 3,782 square feet on the relative east wing? If, if it helps, I can step up and point to the area to operate.
You just need the microphone, sorry. Over here, the microphone.
Say what, I'll flip the board and come back.
Oh, okay.
It almost seems like you guys were given that from the office.
I don't remember it.
Yeah, who would come up with that?
So, that, this exhibit represents the building floor plan. The first floor represents 260,000 square feet. The small area shaded in yellow on the plan, and also included in the packet, 3,782 square feet. We are in this amendment asking for that space to operate as a business that does a small amount of service and repair, and distribution of, and sales of appliances. But primarily, they bring them in, make any modifications or repairs, and then ship them back out. It's, generally speaking, within the use tables, it is in line with servicing, testing, repairing materials under the 6.2 table for industrial or office or business. It's allowed under site plan review. So, since it was not in the original application, the planning department suggested that we present it for your consideration.
What are the hours of operation? What are the hours of operation?
Chip?
I think it's just regular business hours, either seven or eight in the morning till about four or five.
And the reason I ask is because we have taken some serious heat over the truck traffic on Manning Road, which I'm sure you're aware of. And I just want to try to eliminate people coming down here all up in arms again. I want you to succeed. I want, I mean, you've done wonders down there, and I'll help you any way I can help you, but we got to also, you know, respect the neighbors who deal with the truck traffic.
Okay. So it's just the owner's truck, which is, I think, probably like a, maybe an 18-foot box truck.
Yep.
And so he mostly deals with, he was here but had to go for a child issue, mostly deals with entire apartment complexes. And so he's bringing in, however, a truckload and taking them out, but he's not going in and out on an hourly basis. I've never seen him there on weekends. So it's...
Oh, I don't care if he goes back and forth all day long. It's just two o'clock in the morning, truck's idling on Manning Road. I mean, we've heard it all, and, you know, this is not going to be the case here, so...
Oh, God, no. I mean, I mean, as you know, when I first came in here a number of years ago, Rick asked me about posting the property so that we could get rid of the idling trucks that we, at that time, as new owners, were not aware of. And I think that, you know, it's been an improving situation. To my knowledge, there hasn't been any in quite a few years. It's posted, so the police have the opportunity to tell people to get out and the like. And of course, going to sell storage is not going to be tractor trailers anymore, and it's really just Brooks Brothers there for their store fixtures on the first floor. And then there's a beer company that's moving out on the second floor.
So I want to create a working partnership with this, you know? I mean, we could resolve a lot of things working together as a town with them. The where, go now.
No, it's a site plan review.
No.
No, no, no.
She's talking the business.
I can't go in there and buy a refrigerator after it's repaired, correct?
No.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
To the applicant, how many people is this new business going to employ? Do you know?
I think there's about four people.
Oh, good. Good.
Anybody else? Anything?
Mr. Chairman, just so I can, if I may.
Absolutely.
So what prompted this so was the appliances were being kept outside, including refrigerators with doors on. So it was cited for notice of violation, and then when it came with this application, we requested that that be made part of this change. I just want to ensure that none of the, that he's clear that no more appliances or any equipment are going to be kept outside during this period of time.
Right. So since that time, if I can just...
Absolutely.
...point out to this space right here, we gave the tenant the use of this space, and he had been in this upper space here. We gave him that space, no increase in rent, under the condition that he take everything that was outside and put it in there. And I think that we've sent some pictures, and you probably come over and seen that. The property looks a lot better in that area.
It does. A lot better since that time, so.
So they're in compliance now?
They are presently in compliance.
Good. Good. Sounds good. I'm ready. Good, Mr. Chair. Can I get a...
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution for Site Plan Review 1803 with the 22 conditions and the one-site specific condition that all the conditions of the approval, public hearing 2874, will remain in effect.
Second.
Comments on the motion? All in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Eight dash twenty-four referrals to Broadbrook Road.
So this was a referral from town council. Okay. Town Council, just to convey, it was a former school, I believe, the Skidaco School. They just really want to put it on the market and get it sold. This is a project being done through the Community Development Department, and it was referred to this commission from town council. And I provided some background information, just the map on where it is, where any wetlands are, there's none on the property, and the assessor's card for your information, and the resolution from town council, so, as well as a proposed resolution for your consideration.
So I looked at it briefly, and it's kind of vague. Are they putting any historic restrictions on the property or any, I mean, that school goes back, nineteen hundred, I remember, a lady, Margaret Jaziniac, used to come and talk to the council. Every meeting, she was there. And she's no longer with us, but she used to talk about how she went to school there when she was a young lady, and a lot of, a lot of older.
That long ago.
And so, do you have any information like that, or is it just somebody can buy it and tear it down?
I really, I don't have any other information. I don't know, Lori, if you do.
I don't have a lot more information than that. However, it's not in a historic district, but we are working on historic district inventory. So until that occurs, we wouldn't have any really stronghold to keep it intact as it is, so...
Commissioner Suzak.
Unfortunately, I have had some discussions with certain town councilors, and I believe that, what I heard was that it was going to have, you know, historic restriction associated with it, that you could modify that. You could modify the internal usage of the building, but you couldn't necessarily, again, tear it down and just build something new over it. And I thought that's what I had heard.
And that may be, I haven't heard, I haven't read.
But it's not in writing, so things could change, but, you know, I think that the general intention was that it was not going to be allowed to be modified significantly beyond, you know, you can enhance it, improve it, you know, do modifications that would benefit the new owner, but that he wouldn't be able to just tear it down and use the land as, you know, new, pristine, developable land.
Right, because I know, like, the church on High Street, they were supposed to put in restrictions that stained glass windows weren't to be taken out or sold. And I don't, when you guys got the eight dash twenty-four on that, does anybody remember if they saw anything about that?
No, they said they were going to...
I mean, is that part of our purview to make sure that that's in there, or? I've never sat on this side of an eight dash twenty-four. I've always been sending it down.
We could ask the council to consider that, correct?
As part of the recommendation, I believe.
As your recommendation, and I apologize, I should have known more about this item. And I didn't have a chance to talk to Nelson about it.
Commissioner Higgins?
There was, at one time, very historic, the whole building's historic. And I know that one of our assistant town managers at the time had grave concerns about the bell. He was really damned, he was into the bell, and he had it stored, the council had it stored so that nobody could, you know, take it or demolish it. And so that's, that was going to be my thing. It's part of the building, so where is it? And can it be sold off? And, you know, does it have to, I would think it should stay with the building, but that's just me. And I would like to see some suggestions. We cannot make them do it, but we could do some suggestions on keeping and restoring the bell, keeping the, maybe the front of the building, or, you know, I mean, not making it a strip mall, because it can be a strip mall in that district.
Well, I would think the bell, if anything, goes to the historical society.
That's what I was also going to say. If we could find the bell before we sold the building, maybe we could at least save the bell, put it in the historic society with a plaque, this was hung and used, whatever.
Right. And the comment about it's not in a historic district, I understand that, but neither is the Hazerville Institute. And I just don't feel we should be, you know, I was one of the people who fought hard about tearing down Higgins. I was dead set against it. And, you know, yes, the building was in disrepair, but I see this school is the same thing, and, you know, if you guys are on board, I think I'd like to get a little more information from the town about how they're going to put this out there.
You know, years back, I was actually looking at being involved with that, because my wife wanted to do it. The deal with the town in those days was, you could live on the second floor, but you had to keep the first floor as it was, if you leased it for a dollar or whatever you were going to do. But I haven't heard anybody do anything with it since then. But they were very adamant about the first floor had to stay, used as a public space or whatever, and you could rent it out, have meetings there, or all that kind of stuff. But the second floor, you could live on if you wanted.
Somebody came in to have it an art studio and an art gallery, but that never went anywhere.
I believe the building's got brand-new heating systems, or it did back then, not that long ago, but, so if you guys are on board with that, I mean...
Do we just want to include that, you know, we would strongly recommend that, you know, the nature and the features of the building, historical systems, you know, be preserved?
I'd just like to get a little more information. Because once we send it over, you don't have any...
They can do whatever they want.
Yeah, so, if possible, and, you know, share...
An input on the conditions of sale, that's all you...
Well, no, no, but does the town, does the town have a desire to see it utilized, selling it to somebody or something, you know, a purpose? That would be my question. Is there a purpose, hopefully, that the town would like it to be used for? I know you cannot do it, but I know that the town can strongly urge.
I know. That's been up for discussion for over forty years, and nobody's jumped all over it, so I don't know.
There must be somebody interested.
No, they're just putting it on the market.
Yep.
You know, it'd be a great little church. Maybe instead of a commercial building, they'll go there.
It would be a great house.
Mr. Chairman, the town is selling this property, correct, to put it back on the tax rolls. So how will we market it with restrictions?
It's a historic building.
But it's not historically, is it historically registered?
So, no, I do not believe so. However, we, you can put restrictions on the sale of the property. I mean, you could say that you can't tear it down, or you need to put the gingerbread...
That would be on the council's side, though, wouldn't it? Not us.
That's correct, but it is this commission's purview to give that recommendation or require some feedback in the first place.
You can't sell off all the old buildings in town and have somebody just tear them all down. There's going to be...
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but I'm just wondering if there is any pushback for the, I know we have a, there was a contract with the realtor to sell town properties. I just don't know if we're opening up a can of worms here as we try to get properties back on the tax rolls.
We can suggest, the council can do anything they want, but we, as a board, can suggest or request that they look at something. We cannot make them look at something, but it would be nice if we at least tried. I think Ken is right. If we tear down all the old buildings, what do we have left?
I'm not suggesting that. I'm just making sure that anything, any action we take, isn't going to cause any hiccups in the sale or, or in the agreement the town has entered into with the real estate company. That's all I'm saying.
Commissioner Suzak.
Again, I have to reiterate that I've heard that everybody recognizes that it is an historic building, it has some value, but the town doesn't have any need for it. So what they're hoping is that they could sell it to a private individual, recognizing that it does have some historic value and it does have some sentimental value to a lot of the residents in town. But they would be allowed to do whatever they wanted to do with the building, except tear it down or significantly, you know, deface it or deform it or whatever.
Doesn't even say that on this.
Well, it never said, again, you know, I think that...
Put it up for sale, that's what they got. That's it.
Well...
So what I'm hearing is, before a recommendation is put forth by the commission, you want in, you would like to know whether or not there's some sort of protection in place against demolition, and perhaps look into where the bell is located before, before your formal recommendation is sent to the council.
Does the bell go with the building or not? And if it, you know, it should go to the Anfield Historical Society and not be part of the sale.
So, so we'll look into those things, and we can bring that back to you for the next meeting.
I was just checking the PAR, the report that we do every two weeks to the town council, and Nelson didn't say, he didn't talk to the historic value of it, so we'll find out for, get specifics for you before we make a decision.
All right. We don't need to vote to table that or any, no.
Do the tables?
Just ask. It should be, yeah. Motion to table?
I make a motion we table for additional information by the council.
Second.
All in favor? Other business, review of bylaws. Awaiting review.
The town attorney has been very busy, especially with the transitions that have occurred over even the last year or so. I mean, since Chris became the town manager, and then, you know, then Maria became the town attorney, and now she's retired and is coming back, and now we have a new town attorney. So there's been a lot of turnover and a lot of work, so they're trying to catch up to everything, though.
So we're not ready to move on that?
No.
No.
Okay. B, general discussion of regulations and procedures.
So I have got the request for proposals were given to you in your packets. This is for, one, the comprehensive update of the, I'll start with the Plan of Conservation and Development. So for the most part, you don't need to be looking at, you know, the, most of the background except for maybe selection process. What I really wanted to do is make sure that you are good with the overall scope and the intent of the request. So we all... Oh. We all know our PSCD. This big book.
Already got one.
I'm going to hand this out before I have the conversation, but, so, there's certain elements that have to be discussed in the Plan of Conservation and Development, and there's statutorily required housing, commercial development, residential development, infrastructure,
All that good shit.
Open space, things of that nature. But then there's always those things that we, that are very specific to our town that we need to look at. So down, and under the overview, I talked about that we would want to include, but not be limited to, additional topics such as low-impact development, complete streets, transit-oriented development, workforce, affordable housing, sustainability, resilience, and hazard mitigation planning, disaster recovery, the MS4, which is the wastewater that is required to be monitored in town through the state, or from the state by the town, and goals for special districts. And then I also mentioned the fact that we have our icons such as Lego, Mass Mutual, Hallmark, Anfield Square, and Tomstville that need to be addressed as a priority development item. So I just handed out to you the sheet that has a calendar on one side, and on the other side, it has acknowledgements. side, it has acknowledgements, and it has the POCD steering committee. There were 19 members that were listed in the front of the current plan of conservation and development. So we're also going to need to create one of those steering committees. And I didn't know how you would like to go about doing that, whether you wanted to kind of follow the same method that was done here. It looks like, you know, most of, there were a lot of Planning and Zoning Commission members, economic development, representatives from most of the land use commissions, and I think quite a few town council members were on it, some from Board of Ed. I think that in this town, we're going to be able to get people that are interested and wanting to be on this. I've worked in other towns where I had to beg and I couldn't get anybody to come. So I think that's great, that I think we'll be able to get a lot of people on here because it's Enfield's plan. It's not the town planner's plan or the Planning and Zoning Commission's plan. It's the town's plan, and to get as much input as possible is the best way to do things. So do you have any comments as to the RFP for this, for the plan of conservation development? It talks also about, you know, the data update and assessment, the fact that it should be easily read, easily, you should be able to open it up and pretty much understand it immediately. It should be heavy with graphics. So I talked to that about, unfortunately, I didn't bring the one that I marked up, so I apologize for that.
Those people are gone.
So it talks about the project approach and, you know, how a consultant would approach it. So that's the type of thing that we would be interviewing them on. I had all these notes on this other one that I had. So revisions to the POCD, they will develop, refine, finalize, and incorporate recommendations to the goals, objectives, and strategies in the POCD, as well as add tables, graphics, and mapping as necessary. Will try to keep on a year to a year and a half schedule. We may need to seek an extension, just because we're starting a little bit late. So the extension would be actually from the Office of Policy and Management. As long as we are actually working on it and making progress, they usually are very good about, you know, granting any extensions of that nature. So that's the POCD one. I'll go on to the other one if you have any, if you don't have any questions on this at this time. We can always go back.
Okay, you're good.
Yeah, okay.
Is there a budget for this?
There is.
A line item budget?
There is.
We're putting out on our feet?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And that, but that's, that number's not disclosed, obviously, because we're putting it out to the...
I'd rather not disclose it on the record right now.
Okay.
So I don't remember the exact number, anyway.
Okay. So, any other thing? This is required by state statute that it gets revised every 10 years.
Every 10 years. This is a, this is an unfunded mandate.
Right.
But it's also a really good...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, really good what?
It's an unfunded mandate, but it's also something fantastic for the town to do because this is, this is our map for the future. And it's a great way to follow, you know, create what you want to do and then try to follow through it, follow through the plan as far as implementation.
And I think that's where I was going with this. Is there any way, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know, you know, got to go through you to ask about this, but is there any way for this document to have teeth? I mean, it seems to me like, over the years, it's used as a bargaining chip almost. People, the applicant will say, "Well, I used the plan." And the commission will say, "Well, you didn't follow the plan." But it just, is it just going to be a very, I know it's good to do and have a vision, but is this a very expensive document?
If you look at the back of the document, there's, every department has a responsibility project in there.
That's right.
And nobody did any of them, so...
Well, maybe we need to make sure that whatever responsibilities have to be done with this document, that they get them.
Right.
I mean, I'm not really with the... Part of that responsibility would be to make sure that our regulation is in line with that plan, because it's not.
Well, now, I think that's where I'm going with it.
If they follow the plan, they're not meeting regulations right that we didn't do.
I guess that's what I'm saying. It seems like it has no teeth and it's used as a bargaining chip.
Right. When she brought this up a couple of meetings ago, we need to be more involved to make sure, you know, we have a couple liaisons sitting at the meetings who are very familiar with the regulations and say, "Well, that doesn't meet the regulations," or "We need to change the regulations to meet it."
Right.
But you can't have an applicant say, "I followed the plan," and then we say, "Well, that's not our regulation."
Thank you. And that's exactly right, right.
Which had very good points.
Yes.
But our regulation was totally different.
Right.
And that makes everybody look bad, them, us, everyone.
I guess that's exactly where I'm going with this. We're going to make all this effort...
That was just a suggestion of what could happen.
Right.
That wasn't a must happen.
Yeah, but they emphasized many times in their application that they followed the document, that they were looking at, you know, our future vision of the mall area.
Well, that plan is more of an advisory guide.
Right.
That does not have to be followed, but it should be.
Right. I mean...
I'm all for doing it, but I'd just like to see it function better, I guess I'm saying?
Right.
We don't have any choice. It's state mandated.
Oh, I understand, right. And that's how I opened my question. I understand it's state mandated. I asked about a budget.
It is state mandated, but...
But I would like to see a way where this gets incorporated into what we do more.
Right.
Write in that the community development director is the enforcer.
Yeah? No.
So when we go through the plan, what we basically do is we go to all the different boards, commissions, and departments, and we say, "Okay, in the current plan, these were the goals that you wanted to accomplish in the last 10 years. Which ones of these have been accomplished?"
Probably none.
Maybe, maybe not. But I'm just saying, this is the process. And then we're going to say, "Okay, so what of those goals that you didn't get done, would you like to still get done? And what new goals do you want to do?" And so then, and you go through that process, it's a long process.
Right.
But it's needed, and it gives us the guidelines for how we want to develop our zoning regulations. Because we want our zoning regulations to enforce what we want as our goals, right? Part of that is developing an implementation, a POCD implementation committee. I believe it, well, that is actually in the POCD currently. I don't think that committee was ever created.
Okay.
So that is one of the first things that, once we adopt a new plan, we create that implementation committee, and they are the ones that are going to try to oversee all the different departments to make sure that they're following the plan. So, you know, I don't know what's happened in the past. I can only go forward in the future and try to do things as I think they should be done.
I'm very encouraged by what you're saying. I think that's great, you know, because, and I can tell you, because I've served on a couple of committees in here in Enfield for developing and redevelopment and plans going forward, I think twice, where a lot of money was spent on consultants and engineers, and the documents were made. Everybody on the committees were very excited, and nothing ever happened. And it's frustrating. And I know, like I said, I've served on two of those committees.
Yeah.
So we're going to involve the citizens, and it's great to have them involved, get their input, and then spend a lot of money and do nothing. And we're doing it only because the state is telling us we have to do it. But let's do something with it. And if we have those committees, maybe we still have the public involved on these, you know, after it's implemented, after it's voted upon and we accept it.
Once it's approved, then that's where the work begins.
Right. Not just take it and put it on the shelf for 30,000, I don't know if it's $30,000, but...
So what are the other things that is great about...
I just, you know, I just, Mr. Chairman, I just hope you understand where I'm going here with this. I just want to see it happen.
I did. We addressed this two meetings ago. That's why we're going to put liaisons from the commission on that to address. And it sounds like you would be a very good liaison.
You might be the chair.
It's like you just volunteered.
Oh, yeah. Well, I need to learn and study the planning, the planning regulations and codes more, but no, as long as we're going to utilize it the way it's supposed to be utilized and move forward.
Right.
I know, we can't fix anything, like you said, that happened in the past. But it's frustrating because I've been involved with these kinds of things that a lot of money got spent on, and nothing happens. And that's, I guess, my piece.
Commissioner Susak.
Because the only thing I'd like to add to that is that a lot of these things are out of our control in terms of, you know, we can plan, we can change the zoning, but we need somebody who can actually physically make the changes that we're advocating so that, you know, we need a devolver to come in. We need the town to be involved in terms of, you know, I like the idea of this implementation committee because of the fact that you could assign one person to each department or possibly two people to each department that would go after those departments to say, you know, "You really should be doing something like this, and you really should be doing something like that." And have a meeting every single month and find out, you know, what have you done that we had discussed before, so that, again, so we don't have a whole committee meeting with a department, but just certain, you know, subcommittees meeting with each department, and then those subcommittees sort of referring back to the implementation committee so that everybody has an idea. And there is some impetus that keeps going on, because I don't, I think that what you need to do is actually start to dialogue with the department heads, with, you know, the actual departments themselves, to say, you know, "This is what the plan of conservation development says. What are you doing?" And nobody ever does that. And if you dog them enough, they might start doing it. And I think that that's what we need to do. We need to start that ball rolling so that there is some conversation between everybody involved.
And I think the other thing that's really wonderful is that we could get all of the people that are working on creating the plan, since they are already energized and, like, interested, you know, try to get those people to be on that implementation committee so they could carry, help carry through the goals that we've all decided on. So another aspect of the POCD is that if the town wants to receive any grants from anywhere, you have to show that, a lot of times, that you have those certain aspects in your plan before they will even issue that grant to the town. So you have to show you have affordable housing aspects, things of that nature. You almost have to always have something that, you know, if you're going for a grant, if it's not in your POCD, you're less likely to get that grant. So, anything else with that right now? And again, we can go back to this. So as we also had discussed when I first started, is the need to update the zoning regulations, and I think it comes up at every meeting we have, that we really need to update the zoning regulations. So the plan's going to help us, help guide us as to what we need to update in the zoning regulations, but...
Who's going to help us?
Hold on, hold on. You guys have to do it all by yourself. No, 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 not at all.
I thought you just said someone's going to help us.
No, no, we will get consultants. So in, with the overview of what we really need to do with the zoning regulations, I also listed a number of elements that really need to be focused on, the low-impact development, you know, this is green infrastructure, things of that nature. It works with climate change, resilience, hazard mitigation planning, equitable and diverse planning, workforce slash affordable housing options, complete streets, non-point source pollution and MS4, you know, how to work with our agriculture and farming, adaptive reuse. We're talking about selling the grain. What if they want to come in for a school, or they want to come in for residential? What sort of adaptive reuse do we have for that, or for Blair Manor, or something like that? So, I mean, these are things that are coming up more and more and more. So we need to address them in our zoning regulations. Sinage, always the bane of everybody, especially zoning enforcement officers' existence, transit-oriented development, sustainability, resilience, disaster recovery, brownfield remediation. So those are just some big-ticket items that, you know, it's kind of like bringing everything up to date. You know, these are the things that all the towns are looking at now. So one of the other things that I added in here is that although these are both separate requests for proposals, that our goal would be, and our desire would be, to hire one firm to do both. So when they apply, we'll be asking them to state whether they're just applying for that one or for both, both the RFPs. So it would be wonderful to have the same consultant be involved with both aspects so things get carried over from one to the other, and it's consistent, and they would already have that knowledge because they're already working on the other one. So...
Makes sense.
I'd like to get this going as fast as possible, because the sooner the better. I did put together this. So if you look at your calendar, today's the February 13th. Assuming I get approval from this commission tonight, and then just AOK from finance to move forward with it, you know, make sure that they're happy with the insurance clause and things of that nature. I'd like to try to get the RFP out next week, and just remember that Monday for here is a holiday, so we're not open Monday. So I was looking at maybe the 18th or 19th to get the RFP out. You could see the circles is when we have our Planning and Zoning Commissions meetings. Then I would say that the RFP would be due in-house here on the 16th of March. So that gives almost a month for the consultants to get their project planning together for us. So once we do that, then we need to have a subcommittee to go through all the RFPs and narrow it down to the top two, three, five, however many we decide to have. You know, maybe we only get three applicants, and then we just interview them all. Or maybe we get 10, and we need to narrow it down to three or four of them. So then I was thinking we could possibly have interviews April 1st or 2nd. We actually do have a conflict with the rooms on the 2nd. I think both the Thompsonville and this room are taken on the 2nd.
So it's the 1st.
So I would say the 1st. And then, you know, we go on from there and work on contract with the applicants.
Who would you suggest would be on the subcommittee?
First off, they have to, whoever it is needs to have a lot of interest and want to go to a lot of meetings. So just be...
Planning and zoning, town council?
Yeah, yeah.
Board of Ed?
You know, for selecting the consultant, absolutely a subcommittee of planning and zoning. And if you'd like, you know, somebody from maybe, you know, one of the other land use commissions, and maybe inland wetlands, that could be as well. But it's usually mostly planning and zoning commissioners for selecting the consultant.
Okay.
But after that, as many people as possible.
Right, after that.
As possible, but without making it too large, because then, once you get too many people, then you have, it's hard to get consensus, so...
So it was 19 members last time?
It was 19 members.
So what do you suggest, what do you suggest this time?
You know, I think we need to see who has the great interest. You know, 19, 20 members is not horrible. I mean, I couldn't get two when I was doing this in my previous town. So, you know, the fact that I saw 19 people that attended these meetings, that's fabulous. So...
Are we going to pick a person of renown in town to be chairman, or how's that going to work?
We did Martha MacLeod last year.
That's why I'm asking. She is no longer in the area, so...
No, right.
Well, I wouldn't be selecting somebody that doesn't live in town.
No, no. I'm just saying, are we going to pick somebody that's somewhat renowned in town to be chair, or are we just going to...
Well, I think we could, we could work on that, you know, I could work on the procedure for selection and how you're going to do the chair and stuff like that as we're waiting for the RFP to come back.
I mean, she was a great chair for that one.
Okay.
But I don't know too many other people in town that are as qualified as she was.
She, you know, again...
There's a volunteer for that.
I believe she...
I think would be phenomenal for that would be Scott Copan, if he would do it.
Maybe.
Talk about somebody who knows and loves the town.
Oh, I know.
It would be great if you asked around for those...
I'm not going to steal that from him, so...
So back to the RFP.
You know a lot of the people in town where I may not, I may have met them, but I don't have a rapport, or I don't... I don't have a rapport or I don't, or I've never met them.
We'll come up with somebody, I'm sure.
Yeah, so I mean, if you could start asking around, saying, hey, who's, you know, who's interested, you know, let us know. So, we could start that process as well.
It's pretty much a token chair, but it's still, it's an honor.
Right.
Just a question back on the RFP. You talked about the two scopes and having one consultant. So, is the RFP gonna go out in that way? Because I would prefer just having one company do both pieces.
The RFPs are going to go out together, but as separate items. But under the very first part of the each RFP, it says, please note, the town is also seeking an RFP for the other project. It would be the town's desire to hire a consultant that could implement both projects in conjunction with each other. So, we can't require that.
No, that's good. I like that language.
But, you know, I think that, you know, that's in there.
Because I think we'd be just reinventing the wheel and probably spending more money if we had different, separate consultants.
Right.
So I like that language because that will really, that would come onto us later to make the selection.
Yep.
Okay.
That was on your table.
Did you call it?
Yeah.
No, I did put things in there that, you know, we were, let's see.
He went to someone, but he wasn't.
I'll just read this. The goal is to develop user, oh, sorry.
That's a lot of work.
So, with the zoning regulations, I did say, the goal is to develop user-friendly, permissive regulations that incorporate new and current concepts and also address many of the special development challenges such as the reuse of, as I said, Mass Mutual, Hallmark Lego, The Square, Hazardville, Route 5, Thompsonville overlay districts, repurposing of closed schools and down and rezoning of the majority of our residential neighborhoods. See, I already addressed that. Such that they will no longer be non-conforming because if you look at, I'd say probably 70% of our residential subdivisions, they're all non-conforming to the current zone. So, I mean, I think that, that's a big fix for us. So, again, we want to make these simple. We want them easy to read, easy to follow, very permissive. I mean, if we could allow something without having to come here for a special permit, boy, that would be great. It's business friendly, it's economic development. So, but that doesn't mean that you can't require special permits for certain things. But, you know, like the application that came tonight with the little warehouse for the fix-it, for the repair shop, you know, that should be a slam dunk. It shouldn't have even gone to you. That should have been-
Well, that's already a crog, right? Administrative approval change?
No, no, no. Yeah, yes, right.
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. You know, to make it simple, to make it easier for people to follow and understand and easy to get approvals.
Would it be easier, would it be easier for you just to write a new one instead of going through and seeing all the redundancies?
Well, I think, well, that's kind of what I implied, is that we kind, I think I was called comprehensive update of the Enfield zoning regulations. You could just call that a rewrite.
Right, because once you take a document and you change it and change it and change it and change it.
Right.
It's, it just, it's like telephone tag, you know? It just gets so convoluted through the process and we end up getting caught every time and that's gotta stop.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
Well, you could see, this was updated in January 2002, 11, 13, 14, 17, and 19. And unfortunately, a lot of times, what happened with what Jen did, going through the regulations and making sure that all of the heights of the sheds references were taken care of or amended, that didn't always happen with all the amendments that went through. And that's what's gotten us into the bind we're in right now. So, we will probably end up creating essentially new regulations. We'll probably, you know, we'll keep the essential stuff, but we'll add in the things that we need to be addressing.
And once that's done, it's gonna save you guys a lot of time. For her to go line by line through the regulations to find this, I mean, I appreciate it huge.
The computer did it.
But the time it takes, what's that?
The computer does it, but it's still time consuming.
I searched keywords and I, for, and I did it one time.
You were better off just with, you know the regulations and you found this, so just keep it there. Keywords, you lost me on keywords. What does that even mean?
Mr. Chair, you were explaining some of the things that we want to look at. And how about wetlands maps? Now, I'm not sure. I might not understand this correctly, but are we using current wetland maps from the 1960s or 50s still?
Yes, we are.
So, I would like to see that updated. I don't know, I think Yukon does it for, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure. Can you educate me a little bit on that? Because I think that's ridiculous because we may have good developable, developable land in our community that we're looking at it with ancient maps.
Right. So, the wetlands maps were based on an aerial photograph that was done early 60s. Wetlands regulations came into effect in the 70s. And I don't think any of the towns, for the most part, has, have had the flyover for wetlands again. And that's something that I was going to bring up with the DEEP and, you know, Yukon to see if that would be something that would be feasible and, or if there's any plans for that. But, that is not your purview. That is the wetlands commission. Those regulations, that map's not this commission's purview.
But part of this plan we're doing, this document that we're putting out, that we're gonna have developed, shouldn't that be addressed or somehow?
Well, one, it could be a goal, but then we have to figure out how to implement that goal. So, but that is something that I was thinking about myself.
I'm just afraid that there's, I'm just afraid that we have some great land. I mean, look at our industrial park. I mean, there could be some great parcels in there that could be developed. And I'm not sure how they see a bug from a plane because somebody goes in and sees a bug somewhere and all of a sudden you can't build or how do you see a frog? I just, I would like to see that addressed.
Yeah.
Commissioner Higley.
I think it's, wetlands can be confusing. And I understand about the maps are old, but wetlands are state mandated and they're based on soil types, poor draining, alluvial soils, and you cannot change that. In other words, in the industrial park, there are wetlands. And even if it looks like wonderful land, you can't go build on wetlands. The state would not allow it. And if you didn't, if you didn't uphold the wetlands with the wetlands commission, the state would just come in and take it over. So, our hands are tied as a town.
But I hear what you're saying.
I agree with what you're saying to a point, but you can't rule wetlands with an iron fist. And if you got a company coming in that is willing to trade land for land and create wetlands, to use wetlands, that's how we assemble properties to create buildable land like Commissioner Alamo's talking about. And that's why on the agenda coming up, we are gonna have a serious discussion about merging wetlands back with planning and zoning because it wasn't that long ago we were one board. Because it'll eliminate a lot of the repetitive questions. What is the better impact for the town? Giving them a waiver on a side yard setback or trading off wetlands somewhere? And the two boards need to work together. And right now, we're two totally opposite boards. I have asked Jen to put it on, I believe it's on our next agenda, to have a serious discussion, and this is exactly why. Because what you're saying, I'm ahead of you and I'm working on it, we need to come up with a way to move Enfield forward. Our industrial park looks like a ghost town the way it's laid out right now. And if we can create, you know, a two-acre parcel out of the hundreds of acres there and come up with a happy solution everybody can live with, great. But right now, wetlands does their thing and we do our.
We did that with Eppendorf. So, I just didn't get into that. I just was getting into definitions.
And we and the town council did it with the hotel, you know?
Through to Commissioner Higley, I think I disagree with you a little bit because I think when people come in, they use the wetland map as part of their application. And they'll just say, well, you're within 100 foot of a wetland. I mean, how do we know for sure? And, and, let me finish. And there is modern ways of mitigation that weren't even in existence in the 1950s and 60s. So, I, and I really focus on an industrial park. I mean, I think it's an embarrassment. It's an embarrassment. And that was, I don't even want to get into how that all happened with the industrial park, but.
Commissioner Suzeck.
Yeah, I think that what we need is, you know, we have to recognize that there are going to be some wetlands, but you need creative zoning and creative design to move around those wetlands in a manner that still allows the wetlands to exist, but allows for buildings to actually be constructed. I think our biggest problem is that we have relatively large lots that are zoned industrial. And the fact that normally, an industrial building needs a large footprint in order to be a manufacturing or, you know, unless it's some really small thing, but that those aren't really viable things that we're looking to achieve. And they need large parking. If they have a large volume, then parking is associated with that. So I think that realistically, zoning it as industrial land would be a good concept, but it doesn't lend itself to the kind of soils and, you know, the situation that's there right now. So I think that what we need to do is relook at how we're zoning that in order to make it a little more creative or allow it to be more creatively used. So, in that sense, I think that, you know, wetlands, they're wetlands. And I've served on both boards and it's not a mystery to me. But I think that, again, you have to be a little bit of creative. You can do it right and also accomplish something, but you have to be creative. You can't just look at something and say, well, this is what it says and I can't do it any other way because you're not gonna get anywhere.
I agree with you 100%. And that's why wetlands cannot be creative by adjusting a side yard setback or a backyard or where, if the boards were together or work together, which we don't, then you could absolutely reach, creative is the key word. And that's, and I think we could do wonders with a lot of land because today's with the 200-foot setbacks and the restricted areas and, I mean, 90% of this town would never have been built if we went by today's standards. So.
Yeah, you know, you go to some cities and they have beautiful river walks with hotels 10 feet from rivers. Chicago. You don't think that was a wetland?
Up in Mass.
I mean, come on. So, we have to get creative, like figure out ways.
Up in Mass where we're building, you know, they're building right in the marshland. You know, well, that's all wetlands. There's-
But there's modern ways to mitigate. And, okay, we beat that, yeah, so that's gonna be part of it.
Sorry. I think that's about it. If you had, I assumed you kind of read through these and have a pretty good understanding as to what we're doing. If you have any questions, comments, if you read through them, you know, over the next week and, or the next weekend, maybe, if you have any other suggestions or comments as to wording or, I still have a couple tweaks just to make sure that, you know, everything is hunky-dory.
Chairman, one more question.
But, if you have any other questions.
Is this gentleman waiting for Connecticut Hazardful Water?
Yes, I am.
Oh, my God. What's Hazardful Water?
And it's administrative approval.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion that we move this administrative approval up in the agenda to our next discussion.
Second.
Aye.
I apologize.
That's okay.
I don't see a past, you know, so I figured you're not a reporter.
Understood.
So, can I, Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. I was gonna bring it up in a correspondence, maybe in, this is the time to ask the question. I just, well, okay, well, it's about a zone. I just had a question that I'm not familiar with. I don't know. Want me to wait? I'll wait. We can get him up.
Hi, I'm Tim Mulcahy of PDS Engineering in Bloomfield, Connecticut, and asking for administrative approval for lot number zero, I believe, on Taylor Road. Trying to move it to the north, I think about 22 feet, so better use of the property. And one of the intentions is, over the next probably four or five years, is to put solar canopies up. So, that's pretty much the big gist of why I'm here.
Lori, no change, nothing?
No, there, it wouldn't create any non-conformities or really any changes to the site. It was conforming when it came in. You approved it. Moving it 25 feet would not really change anything other than it moved 25 feet.
Sidewalks, parking lots, everything's gonna stay the same.
Yep.
Yep.
I move that we allow administrative approval for XZA 20 dash, oh, no, excuse me, SPR 18040 Taylor Road.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
You're all set. I apologize.
Sorry for the delay.
So, can I just interject? I've been here for a little while. I've heard all your comments. So I'm a developer builder. I own, you know Pearson, obviously, and so I'm partners with him. I can honestly attest to everything that you said tonight. It's very conducive to people like me because I build all over the state. I own all over the state. I own in Mass, too. So, your thoughts and your recommendations are astounding compared to other municipalities. I can tell you that right now.
We're trying to get back on track.
Trust me when I tell you that. I live in Long Meadow. I mean, I'm, so I'm through here every day, but a lot of towns aren't as forward-thinking.
So, see, he just committed to 200,000 square feet as soon as we do this. Thank you!
Trust me, I own some stuff in Enfield. I have some stuff all over. But, yeah, so I can just tell you, you're on the right track.
We just got one member, we got one member in the committee.
Lives in Long Meadow.
Oh!
Look at the time. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. All right, correspondence. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, I just wanted to know if I should move forward with the RFPs as is or?
I was gonna interject that I think that you should move forward with the RFP. The only thing that I see is that your due date is March 16th, which is a Monday. And in all your written documentation, you have it on a Wednesday. And I think that sometimes it's difficult to use a Monday when you need to get a proposal out. A Monday doesn't give you, you know, you have to be working over the weekend or get it done on the Friday before. And if you wanted to actually get some additional applications, you know, submitted or the potential for additional applications submitted, if you did it on a Tuesday or Wednesday, it allows them on Monday to actually look at it again, you know, fine, you know, tune their proposals. Because a Monday application is, it's always tough to get up on a Monday and have it in before 10 o'clock, 10 a.m. or whatever. So that, you know, a midday day would probably be better would be the recommendation that I would make.
Okay. It's funny because I was thinking, well, I was gonna put it the 13th. And I was like, well, I'll give them the weekend. So, but-
Yeah, but that's Friday the 13th, so you don't want to do that. It's superstitious.
So, you know, maybe we can make it like the 18th. The thing, what I was looking to do was have enough time for whoever the subcommittee is to figure out who we want to interview, have time to review the applications and make a decision. And that, so it basically only gives us a week and a half if I make it like the 18th to do that. You know, I'd-
Or you can always make it Tuesday the 17th. But it gives them at least, at least a full day Monday to do something.
I have no problem. It's a great idea. I have no problem with that. So, make it the 17th for the RFP to be due. And this is also all assuming that I could get these out next week based on the other reviews that have to occur. So.
One of the problems we had with a couple of the applicants were, they were so far away. They coming down from Buffalo or something. We had to schedule meetings to their convenience, which wasn't always the best.
I have a little clause in here saying that the-
I mean, they were a great company and they did great work, but you had to schedule around when they were living.
They should have proximity to work area to reduce travel time and associated expenses.
Well, they claimed that wasn't a problem at the beginning.
Didn't they get snowed out a few times?
More and more into it. Yeah, well, coming out of Buffalo, you can always get out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was a good company and everything, it just, it's hard to schedule with them.
So do you want to form the subcommittee now, because you're running out of time here?
Do you want to...
You're going to have to go to wetlands, and you're going to get a couple off of wetlands?
Well, I think, I think for just the consultant, the review of the consultants themselves, I think, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission would be sufficient. But you don't have all of your members here, so I don't know if anybody wants to volunteer, and we could call the other members, and just say, you know, "By the way, we're going to be doing this."
Mary, everybody else is an alternate.
I was on the last one, so I'm familiar with some of the stuff.
So you're on?
Yes.
Charlie, okay.
I lived that long.
So, well, so this is, right now, we're just forming a committee to review the consultants' RFPs, so we can decide who to interview.
Rich and Charlie.
Rich? Jen? Anybody else?
Rich and Charlie.
Mary Scott will probably be on it.
Mary Scott wants to be on the, the big part of it. So this is, I mean, you guys have been in business, everything, you're, I'm comfortable with both of you, absolutely.
So Charlie, Rich, and Jenny?
No, just Charlie and Rich.
That's a band, that's a group, isn't it?
Isn't that a group? Rich and Charlie, Charlie and Rich? Is that a group?
Group of what?
So we're just going to have the, you're going to have two people reviewing the consultants' for...
And you.
Interview, yep. I'm just asking, I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just clarifying.
Absolutely.
So it's Charlie and Rich?
Probably should be more than two, just to pick the company, though.
To pick them, but you guys are going to review them.
No, to pick them, you could all be on the panel. I mean, we're going to set a special meeting, so you could do the interviews with the entire Planning and Zoning Commission here.
You do?
So, just two?
Charlie.
Okay.
Yep. You guys will weed through them all, because I know what the process is like.
But the chairman, should he be on it?
Rich and Charlie.
I think I've heard Rich and Charlie, is that right?
And Mr. Nelson, and Chairman Nelson should be on it, too.
You need me, you know how to get ahold of me, I'd be there, but I have faith.
It's up to you, you know...
No, I'm very, I'm very comfortable with both of them.
Staff will obviously be part of it, so...
The extensive knowledge on everything we're talking about, Rich has been in business for years, so he knows the business side of things.
Charlie was in business, too, one time.
Off and on.
Yep. Okay.
I mean, we did it, we just did it on the health board, and, you know, the inefficiencies in a company are going to shine right through them, so.
There's a lot of good companies out there that...
Oh, there is.
Will be interested in this.
The one from Buffalo was great, except for blizzard time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
So staff, Rich and Charlie, okay.
And the entire commission. So they'll come back, discuss it with us, and then the entire commission will make the vote.
They'll present to the whole commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, good. Okay, correspondence, Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, 72nd Annual Conference.
So, that happens to fall on March 26th, which is your regular meeting night.
That means it's on our meeting night.
So if you all wanted to go, and, or if a majority of you wanted to go, I suppose we could always move the meeting night to maybe that Wednesday, or, we're going to have a meeting the following week for interview of the consultants.
Is that in the budget, or is that out of our pocket?
We have some money. I don't think we have enough money to have everybody go, but if everybody were to decide to go, I would see what I could do. The ZBA tends to like to go as well.
In discussion with Raquel, we were looking at budgets, actually, and there are awards associated with this. So for people who have been on the commission for 12 or more years, you're eligible to get an award. And in discussion, as we were discussing, we figured that if all of the people who are eligible to receive that reward would like to go, we can cover their costs, and maybe one or two potentially other people. So we would need to see who wants to go first.
Need to see who needs, who wants to go. Will we still have a meeting? And who's eligible for...
Doesn't matter if they're still getting one.
I could get the award. Like Nick?
Yeah.
Sure the council would go for that.
Well, she just said they'll pay for the people who are getting awards, and I'm willing to step aside to make sure that that happens.
We'll have to...
So we need to make sure Charlie Durin's invited, and he's aware of it.
Mm-hmm.
Charlie Ladd.
Yep.
Nick LaFakas.
Yep.
And I believe that was the three that are eligible.
Who won ZBA?
I believe Mary Ann Turner and Charles Masterburty.
They've been on that law?
Yep.
So I have to, will need to just verify from the Connecticut Federation that the, those recipients can receive the award if they are no longer on the commission, so...
Yeah, and that's...
Just need to verify, I'm not positive.
Yeah.
And Charlie may have already gotten an award.
I think he already has. He was on 25 years or something.
Okay.
Well, anyways, you figure that stuff out. I really, and I think the commission's behind me on this, make sure that the applications are sent in if they're eligible, and they're there if they choose to go.
Okay.
And the town at least picks a tab up on them. I'm not worried about myself, or...
Right, but we need to decide whether or not, well, first we'll figure out how many people want to go, or are going, and then we'll figure out whether we even have a quorum to have a meeting, because...
Normally, in the past, for all the years that I've been associated with the town, they cancel the planning and zoning meeting, and count that as a meeting, and everybody goes. That way, you're not feeling that you have to stay here and miss the presentation, not the awards, the presentation, because there's a lot of good material. This is affordable housing.
I understand, I can't go. I sold my house, and I'm moving that day, and I will be at the meeting, but I'm here herself.
So you're out regardless?
Yep.
Okay.
You don't want to live on that road anymore, after you did that Chevy.
Being a new member, I would be interested to go.
It's a very lovely event.
Okay.
And they have very good food.
I mean, even if, you know, if I have to, I could pay for, if I have to pay for myself to go, I just don't think we should give any of our budget and money to ZBA, let them get their own money, for their members.
I understand that, yeah. ZBA has their money, they have money, too, so, I mean...
All right, well, I don't want to take our money, we'll give Mary Ann and that whole crew our money, I'm only kidding.
We'll figure it out.
You can afford your own.
I know, I said I'll pay for my own, yeah.
I can afford it, too, I just didn't want them.
Oh, well, you don't have to, you're getting an award.
That doesn't mean I don't have to pay.
Yeah, it does.
So are you saying that you would like to cancel the meeting, or would you like to reschedule it to, say, the 25th, if I could find a room?
No, I'm saying that if we, if we have things that we need to talk about, and that's Ken's decision, we should have a meeting, but usually, the meeting is not held on the night of the aqua turf thing. That way, people don't feel they have to stay here and miss...
So you want to reschedule the regular meeting?
That's up to Ken, he's the chair, but I'm just saying what we've done the best.
Again, it depends on what the load is at that particular time, too.
Right, right, I agree.
You could have a meeting with no, nobody applying, and that's why I'm scared of that week.
Right, you'll be at the meeting, I'll be at the meeting. Are you going to this, Frank?
I would like to go, being a new member.
I'll be at the meeting.
Here.
Yes.
So I got three. So we need to discuss with Mary Scott, I'm sure Linda would go.
Yeah.
No, Linda wants, always goes, and Mary always goes.
Right, absolutely. Okay, and Mary goes, so I need to just check with John, and Drew? No, Dane.
So you need to have a quorum here, is what you're looking for.
And I will have it, because I have three right now.
You need four.
Need four.
Right, so I need to just check.
So who's the third? Are you...
But she's not going to be here.
I've got Rich, Suzak.
Staff's not going to be here for a meeting either, though, because they're going to the...
Yeah, aren't you guys going to the meeting? I mean, aren't you going to AquaTurf?
I don't necessarily go.
I wasn't planning on going.
You had mentioned we can do the meeting the night before, could we, being it's a regular scheduled meeting, and they're already posted for a whole year, could we switch?
Yes.
Yeah, we would have to cancel the 26th, and then set...
Okay, I was just asking, logistically, if we can do it.
And we're good to go. And we don't even know what the agenda is yet. We've been working very smooth, getting things approved, moving along, so...
Right.
As of right now, the meeting stays, Rich is going to be here, I'm going to be here, Vinnie will be here.
So all the important guys are here.
No, all the important guys are getting awards. We're just totally stuck behind.
So, but you still need at least one more person to be up there.
Right.
And, yeah.
I, I mean, reach, I'll reach out to John, ask him.
Okay.
I don't know about Dane. I don't know what the status is with him, so...
He hasn't even been to a meeting yet, so...
Right.
Pretty hard to say.
But he still fills a quorum if he's here.
Yep.
And, and if he's not, then that's another reason to go to the town council, and ask them to put somebody who's going to start showing up.
All right.
Okay, so we're keeping the meeting on for the 26th for now, we have, we've got, we've got almost a month to work it out.
Yeah, that's just my opinion, guys, I'm just one, it's not, so I have three right now, I think we can get the fourth.
I was going to say, is there anything super important? How it can come?
And Jen, you want to go?
I want to go, and I don't mind paying, you know, myself.
So it would be Jenny, Charlie, then Charlie Durin, and Nick.
Nick LaFakas did confirm that he would be interested in going.
It would be nice, yeah.
Nick is going?
Yes.
Good, good.
So, and then we just need to poll the other members.
You should come back.
I'd be surprised if Durin goes, because he's been skipping those because of his wife's health and his health.
Well, he could go and have his daughter.
Commissioner Alamo is the fourth for the meeting, so we have a quorum.
I'm going to stay back.
Oh, okay. Okay. But you were so interested...
That's because you don't want to miss a meal.
This, this one is affordable housing, it's going to be really interesting, the alternatives to affordable housing.
I'll let you go, and I'll stay here for the meeting.
What?
Yeah.
They don't have prime ribs at the lobster.
Yes, they do.
I've been many.
Okay.
So are you good with that?
Yeah.
Meeting's on schedule?
Yep, and we will investigate further for attendees.
The chairman gets prime ribs.
Updated commissioner contact list?
Just with the updates you required.
Okay, yep.
Is that what you wanted, Rich?
Yes.
Yeah. No, you had said that you wanted to go, to go in a specific order, so, so it made sense to do that, so, that's good.
Commissioner's correspondence, Commissioner Alamo.
Yeah, I had a question I was going to bring... I was going to bring it up at our earlier discussion. Opportunity zones, I hear a lot about them in the news, can you tell me a little bit more about them? How do you, how do you achieve one? Can Thompsonville be an opportunity zone? Just some background, please?
I don't know a lot about them, but basically, they are areas of, areas that need assistance because of low income and distressed communities. The state decides who becomes an opportunity zone, which was decided already, however, there is, and we were not selected. So Enfield is not an opportunity zone. There is some discussion that there may, a lot more opportunity zones in the future, when or where, I'm not sure. Certainly, we will be with our hands up if it happens.
So is it a competitive process? Is it like getting a grant?
I'm, it is, it is getting funding, I don't know...
But isn't it, isn't it where private companies invest in, in the zone, being opportunity zones?
I, like I said, I haven't really boned up on it, because we weren't part of it, and I've had to learn a lot of other stuff, so I'd have to learn more about it.
So if it's going to come up again, maybe we have to talk to our delegation, our local representatives?
I mean, we have the TIF, which is more of like an investment.
Right, yeah, yeah, I understand that, but it seems like these opportunity zones are starting to work throughout the nation.
Right, yeah. Like I say, I did hear that there's going to be some...
So if there's an application process, and it's competitive, if you apply maybe totally as the town of Enfield, we wouldn't look as strong because of our demographics, but if we applied for it using the Thompsonville area, may put us higher up on that totem pole to be accepted. If we do a target area, I'm not sure how the application process is, but...
Yeah, and I'm not either.
Our demographics may have threw us right out of the mix, but we got to find out if we can just use a part of the town. And what you described, seems like it would, you know, get us up higher if we use just the Thompsonville area, you know, on top of the TIF.
Yeah, I know that we actually were removed from the distressed community list, but that might change with the census. It's good and bad.
Good and bad, right, right.
It's good, because we're not considered distressed, but it's bad, because then we are not eligible for other funding sources, so, again, I didn't really focus on learning about the opportunity zones, because I learned that we were not part of it, and it wasn't, and up until recently, it was like not going to happen, that they were going to change or add any of them, so...
When you have some spare time, could you just find out a little more about them, what they're about, and maybe we could be geared up and ready to go?
Absolutely, I'll get you a summary.
Yeah. Thank you.
It was actually an item of discussion at the Southern New England American Planning Association. I went to one of the workshops on opportunity zones.
Oh, you did?
And I felt the same way that you did, and when I talked to Lori, she had the same answer, but I think I still have the stuff from the conference, so that might be helpful.
Okay. Was it by demographics, or was it a competitive process?
It, it was, just given the amount of communities that are in Connecticut looking for any type of funding, and from what I understood, it didn't necessarily mean you were going to get investments from private developers, but it sort of incentivized private developers a little more to come to your community, which is why they've been so successful.
We have a natural resource, the river, we all want to address, so, you know, being an opportunity zone may help us complete some development along the river and in the area here. So, yeah, any more information we can get on that, or if there's going to be some application process coming up, let's stay on top of it.
Yeah, I've actually already, you know, had that conversation with a couple people that we need to be, you know, keep an eye on this one.
Yeah, right, and we need to reach out to our state legislators and senators, we can ask them to keep us apprised of what's going on with that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There's two lists that I should have.
I would just like to point out that we did, we did get this flyer on the Northern Connecticut Agricultural Summit.
Yep.
So that it is going to occur on Saturday, March 29th, 2020, and I was just reading some of the topics that might be, I guess, of interest to some of the viewers that we have there. of the viewers that we have there. It's growing hemp in Connecticut is one. Beekeeping basics, pollinating, meat regulations, racing, backyard poultry, hydroponics, farm access, farm insurance, climate change, farming resiliency. I, I think there's going to be a lot of good subjects that could interest a lot of different people. And it is going to start at about, I think, 8:30. The doors open at 8:15. And the keynote speaker is Joan Nichols from the agricultural director, executive director of the Connecticut Farm Bureau Association. So, but just, just to put that out so that if people wanted to put it on their calendar for the end of the month, they could start thinking about it.
Yeah, just to add to that, if, if somebody wants to find that, that signup sheet, it is list, it is on the web, the webpage for the agricultural commission on our Enfield site. We're also going to be putting it back out on Facebook and, and some of the other, what is it, Twitter? And we're probably going to put it on the front page, on our front webpage. We just didn't want to put it on too early because it, as things get added, it gets lowered down on the page, so. And there's been a press release out on it. And it's free to anybody that wants to come. So, please come to that. This is our second annual. Last year, we had about 75 people show up, and that was with the snow date. It was very well received, and we're hoping to have this to be more successful and to continue it. So... Well, we're having an agricultural summit. So... Yes. No, I do have a couple of things. So, we are working on community, expanding the community gardens. We're seeking a crowdfunding grant from Sustainable CT. So, we're actually working on trying to put some beds over by the main library and then also on church and chapel, the, right behind or just north of Lomonia Center. So, we're hoping to have those beds up, at least 25 or 30 of the beds up and running for June, so...
Main Library or Pearl Street Library?
The main, over...
Okay.
What, oh...
Middle Road.
Behind the playground?
Middle, Middle Road, yes.
Middle Road, yeah.
Yeah, you're pointing here and like, that's to the old one, so, all right.
The old one's over there.
Oh, okay. Yes, okay.
Am I right? Thank you.
The farm, we are working on changing the farmer's market from Wednesdays to Sundays. So, that's, that's a, a new thing that's coming up.
What time is that?
I think we're having it, it hasn't actually been decided yet, so I don't want to say...
What time is it currently on Wednesdays?
Oh. Wednesday's right afterward. It's 4:30 to 6:00.
Yeah.
So...
This Sunday's definitely better. Absolutely.
So, it's, it's new, so it's all in the works.
Yep.
We might be working on a census count committee. We're trying to figure out how best to operate something of that nature. I mean, it's 2020 census, and the committee is supposed to be formed to try to make sure that censuses are actually being taken and focus on the areas that really need to be focused on. I mean, you know, Thompsonville and some of our higher density, lower income areas really need to be, you know, make sure they're canvassed properly. Actually, the Kasha Persiello was following through with that. And we have been approached by somebody that's also working with the Enfield Arts Council to try to bring art into Thompsonville, especially into blighted buildings where if there's some sort of...
Boarding.
Boards or something, then then they would create the same size board someplace and then replace the board with the nice art. So, the one thing that we have to...
They can, though.
We've had that before.
Not graffiti art, okay? But graffiti can be art. So, but the big thing that we were concerned about was that it would not be a sign. So, we're working on, working with this nice lady, and she's already forwarded us information from Hartford, who already has a big program for the arts.
Say the Strand already has that on it, don't it?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's still there, but they tried that, I don't know if it was 15 years ago.
No, it's not graffiti. It's somebody painted the boards.
Yep. No, it was nice. It was actually, yeah, no.
He was one of the painters.
Right. See, it was not graffiti.
No, it was nice.
It was done. Yeah.
Well, like I said, so, we're working to see what sort of a program we could get up and running here and work with the beautification, or the, not beautification, but the arts council. So, those are just some things that I've been working on.
Okay. I'll say.
Yes.
I have a question, Ken. Mr. Chairman. Under applications to be approved, I mean, PBC just said none, right? Oh, you're there?
Oh.
No, she just finished her town report.
Okay.
Authorization for administrative approval. We moved applications to be received.
Well, I have one other item potentially for administrative approvals that we, it was sort of a, I wanted to run it by you. The King's, King's Liquors on, on King Street, they exist already in their unit, and there's two units in the building that they're located in. And they want to expand from the unit they're in, stay there, but just move their business beyond and take the, the wall down and make it a larger unit. And we were going to, we're thinking of handling it as a zoning permit, considering their use is already approved in that building. Unless you want to handle it as a site plan or admin approval, we just wanted to run it by you.
What building?
It's, uh, it's 1541 King Street. A lot of times what happens is a building permit will be put in, and then it comes to, usually to me for an approval. So, in this case, they're demising a wall, he's expanding the business, but the business was previously approved as a liquor store on one side. And it was separate. It's King Street down here. So, rather than just approving it through just the building permit, we were thinking of issuing a zoning permit to handle it so that we'd have a record of it and have an approval of some sorts, but still have a record of planning rather than just the building department.
Is he going to be a liquor store?
Where the old Dunn's was?
Yeah, it's presently King's Liquor right now, next to, next to the hotel Dunn.
On the side where the restaurant was?
The other side, yeah, there was a restaurant. He, he wants to demise the wall in between and expand.
Is this by the old Bernies?
It's an easy means of, of expediting it and streamlining it. It really doesn't impact anything down there other than that.
Yeah, I know. See, are they ever going to fix that parking lot? Did they fix it already with the big potholes? Did they fix it ever?
Part of it, part of it was fixed. I'm going to see what happens in the springtime. But we do have a, a section in the, for site maintenance.
Yep.
So, if things like that arise, I usually go to, to that to...
Well, when you're approving it and signing off on it, you might want to mention it. Just, you know, to let them know springtime's coming and...
We can do that.
First thing that comes to mind is every time you go by there, there used to be the in-ground pool. And it's just all overgrown. It's not attractive. It's where you come into Enfield. I mean, is this where we use? Yeah.
There used to be a motel.
Yeah. There was an in-ground pool right to the right side of it. Correct. The motel's on the left. This was like, this was like the check-in place for the motel, and the pool was to the right.
It used to be...
But it was all overgrown. I don't know if they really cleaned it up much.
Before I do an approval, I'm going to check it. So, I'll, I'll make sure that there aren't any zoning issues prior to any approval. But we were just looking at, tried to streamline it as long as there aren't any deviations from what you would normally approve in a situation like that.
Right. I'm just looking at some sort of like landscaping, too. I mean, that is the entrance into Enfield.
Well, you know, you can, you can review it. I mean, if it looks to, to be something that's going to be a little more involved than, than...
I'll leave it up to you.
All right. Okay.
All right. I'm good with it.
Yep.
Sounds good.
You want to vote? Or you're good?
If you're good with a zoning permit, we'll handle it as a zoning permit, but if...
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I had one quick other thing. You had requested the outcome of the 34 Burnham Johnson case with the Commission on Housing and, and hu, I'm sorry, Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities. So, first of all, the PCC was not actually the primary party. It was actually against the town of Enfield. The complaint was resolved by confidential settlement with no admission of liability. But we did have, part of the settlement was that we had to agree to have up to two, a two-hour minimum fair housing training for staff and hopefully commissions if they decide to attend, with emphasis on reasonable accommodations. So, that's what I can relay to you. So, but it's, it's done. It's final.
Okay. All right. Taylor Road's done. Text amendment's done to change the export laws. Why is that under applications to be received? XCA 20-01 text amendment, application to amend.
That was just letting you know that, that, that text amendment has to come before you for public hearing. So, that'll be coming up next.
Oh, that'll be coming up.
Even though it's a, sort of a petition by the Planning and Zoning Commission to change the regulations, it still has to be, like, follow the same text amendment process as someone from the public.
Okay. When do you expect that back?
This one for accessory building heights, the CROG gets 35 days to review, and that 35 days is coming up, I think, next week. So, that means your next meeting, you would be able to hold a public hearing.
Is that for the whole town, like we discussed before, so there's no lake overview that you have to come back for? Covers the whole town, right?
Right. Well, we, we sent in the residential, commercial, and industrial districts to, to CROG. I don't think it would be a big deal to amend that one part for lakefront overlay.
Yeah. That way, we do everything once.
Yep.
That'd be great. And it's coming. That's good.
And is the administrative approval already at CROG?
Yes, that, so, all the other ones that we discussed, the administrative approval, the removing Thompsonville Village Center and site restoration bonds, those are all at CROG. And those 35-day periods should be up in time to have them on for the first meeting in March. I believe it's the 12th.
Right. That's what I was getting at. Can we make them all in one public meeting, public hearing?
If you wanted to bump the, the accessory building heights to the first meeting in March, we could.
Well, that's one advertisement in the newspaper versus five. Right, trying to save money in your budget and advertising.
Okay.
I mean, if it makes sense to you guys.
Yeah.
You guys agree?
That could work.
Go for it.
All right. So, we'll put them all on for the 12.